So, good evening, folks. I'd like to call to order the November 12th, 2013 City Council Succession Agency, the redevelopment agency for the city of San Carlos. We're going to have a pledge of allegiance, and that's going to be led by Cub Scout PAC 65. So, guys, please rise. Come on up to the microphone, fellas. Come on up. Yeah, you can use that one. Come up with that one. If that one doesn't work, the other one should.
This one's mine, okay.
Guys, step over that way, and then you can all get your voices in.
All right, you guys ready? And then, the flags?
Flags up here.
Up here, so we all want to look that way.
Okay. Go ahead and start up.
Ready?
Hold your hand. Holds it for me.
Go ahead, guys. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So PAC 65 is going to be with us for a few minutes, learning about civics, learning about government, and hopefully taking good thoughts home. So we'll go from there. Number three, changes to the order of agenda. Mr. City Manager, any changes, or anyone else?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We'll go through that one. Reports from closed session, Mr. Rubens?
No reportable items from the closed session in the special meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next item is council communications and announcements. These are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence they've received. They are informational in nature. No action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Mr. Grocott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to draw attention to the -- of the council to a couple of situations we have in town that people have talked to me about that are troubling for them, and it has to do with traffic and the mix of the traffic, particularly with school crossings. One location is on San Carlos Avenue in front of a rundle, and despite the new yellow crosswalk that's been put in, and we've got some lights going in, in pavement lights, there are still issues with drivers ignoring parents and children crossing the street and driving too fast and so forth. And then, the second one is on Cordilleras, and that is an area where, at Bell particularly, there's a crossing, and it gets quite congested in the morning. Cordilleras gets used a lot by folks for commuting as, I guess, an alternative to the Alameda. And in that case, there's three schools near that site. They've got crossing guards that are volunteers with the parents with the schools, and there's just a lot of issues there. I went out and looked at it a couple of times, and there's issues with inconsistency in how the road's marked, how the intersections are marked, where there are sidewalks, where there aren't sidewalks, parents parking on the east side of that intersection at Bell, up the hill, walking down with their children, there's no sidewalks there. It's, quite frankly, a bit of a frightening situation. And I wanted to draw it to the council's attention. I know they've been to Traffic and Transportation, the parents on that street, on Cordilleras particularly, trying to deal with the issue. There's people that live on Cordilleras that have been trying to deal with this for 10 years, and really getting no sufficient solving of the problem they have. So I thought I would raise it tonight, see if we could get a consensus to have it either brought to council, or some kind of act, not really action by us, but just some kind of consensus on how we can address this and move it along perhaps quicker, perhaps discuss at a future council meeting about enforcement at these types of sites. The real part of the problem, the real problem, is the overlay of commuter traffic with school traffic and kids going to school.
Okay. Actually, I think, Mr. Walter, I think I brought that up also, the same issue with you about a week and a half or two weeks ago, on the Bell and Cordilleras one, I also got that call. Perhaps we can, some sort of informal report on that, and maybe also with Chief Roethlis, who is here, or was here. Oh, I'm sorry, Chief. Maybe combination, we can have sort of a combo report and see if we can, you know, see how that, it seems like we might be able to, who knows, put an officer at least in the San Carlos one, and that might help a little bit, but I agree with you, I think it'd be a great idea, so we'll do that.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Clapper? I'm sorry, were you finished? I apologize. Ms. Clapper?
Yes, I have three items. I went to the Housing Leadership Day. It was very interesting, they had a special session for elected and appointed officials regarding the housing element update that will be coming up next year for all of the cities. And in addition, they had a very interesting session also talking about the aftermath of the Hallmark Apartments fire, and from a housing point of view, what the impact was on people, and the learning opportunities of all the agencies that were involved, not just in dealing with the fire and the week afterwards, but going on for several weeks and months afterwards, the impact on the people that were living there. So it was a very interesting session, and for any people that may be more interested in understanding some of the aspects of what will be going into updating our housing element, there is a website that has been created called 21elements.com that is available with that information. And the second item that I have is something that I wanted to bring up to share with the council, perhaps for a future agenda item, having to do with the Samatello County Library. We had a recent JPA board meeting, and one of the topics that was discussed was the library donor fund. The board had a study session, and there are three cities for which there are monies that are set aside in the donor fund. And so they're looking at, what are the options? Do we continue having a donor fund? Anyway, it's something that I think would be good before the next board meeting, which will be in February, that would be good for whoever is going to be on the JPA board for the library, have a sense of collectively how the council is looking at this issue. There were a lot of different points of view at the board meeting, and I know that Jeff Maltby has been updated by Anne Marie DeSpain, the director for the county library system, with what's going on, and also Christine Boland is the member of the operations committee. And they have not yet dealt with this particular issue, but between now and the February meeting, they will. So it's something that I would suggest that the council members have a presentation by staff to understand what some of the issues are and the direction, how you might want to direct the board to go forward with those excess monies. It's a fairly complex issue, and there's a lot of different ways to parse it, and I think it would be very helpful to be able to do that. And the very last item I have is, I'm so very, very pleased to announce that both of my parents have just moved up from San Diego, leaving their home of 45 years, and are now kitty-corner across the street over in the Elms. And it's so wonderful to know that I can go see them on a regular basis after many years of traveling back down to San Diego. So I just wanted to share that with everyone, because I'm so proud of them at 83 and 88, making a really huge move in their lives, and I think it's going to be great for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clapper. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of items. Had the opportunity to attend the library grand reopening, I think it was on the second. Also, they had a little reception the night before. If you haven't been over there, the remodel, the remodeling job was just fantastic, it's just a beautiful facility, it's something to be very proud of. And there was a very nice crowd on Saturday morning, the second, for the reopening. Then the other item is, I had an opportunity to, along with some members of staff, to go visit with the people, the management of Home Depot last week, and they are very happy and proud to be in San Carlos. They think they're being treated well. Their only issue is that their employees have to travel quite a ways, most of them have to come across the bay from San Jose, because there's just not enough housing for them. But generally, Home Depot's done a fine job, and it was a great tour.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ober.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity this past weekend to attend the 150th anniversary celebration of the local chapter of the Masons, the combined Ridwood City-San Carlos organization. It was actually kind of interesting hearing about some of the history and whatnot of that, and they've been in San Carlos since about 1946, I believe, so quite a bit of history there. I also wanted to ask, this is something I've been experiencing firsthand with my new home construction project, I've been noticing that, I think I may be one of the few people who is a real, real stickler about the working hours, the, you know, eight to five and not working on certain holidays and whatnot. I would be interested, because I have gotten complaints, as I'm sure we all have, from people over the years about violations of those rules, I'd be interested in seeing if staff can come up with a way of assessing to what extent noncompliance with the working hours is in fact an issue in the city, and if it is, what we might do about that. Because, as I said, from my anecdotal experience, it does seem to be fairly pervasive.
Okay. I'm sure Mr. Valley can come up with something in the next month or two for us. All right. I have nothing tonight, so we'll move on to item six, which is council appointments and presentations. Tonight, we have a presentation or proclamation to Ben Kuzber for Boy Scout Troop 321 upon receiving his Eagle Scout Award, so.
Do that? Daniel, go. Thank you. We are very blessed in, you're taller. We're very blessed in San Carlos. I can't, I'm sure somebody can tell me, but it seems in the last year and a half or so, we've had a number of Eagle Scouts, and it's a tremendous honor, something I never achieved. I think I was a Life Scout, that is about as far as I got. But it's a tremendous honor, and a tremendous amount of work goes into this by the individual and by the group that supports him. I'm going to read some of these items here, honoring Ben Kuzber in recognition of achieving the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a character-building organization composed of young men seeking to prepare themselves as better leaders and citizens for tomorrow by developing those traits and strengths of character of all people, and whereas scouting plays a vital force in the lives of many hundreds of boys in the city of San Carlos, who are guided by a great many adult volunteers, who have given generously of their time and talents, and whereas the special and unique honor of achieving the highest award in scouting has been earned by, we'll have a new one prepared for you, because we have the wrong name here, but that's okay, Ben Kuzber of Troop 321. Therefore be resolved that I, Bob Grisilli, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, hereby congratulate Ben Kuzber for attaining the Eagle Scout and commend him for his service and accomplishments in the nation's largest youth organization dated this 12th day of November 2013. So congratulations. What we usually do is ask Ben a couple of questions, like, basically, the most important is what his project was, but I ask a couple of others. Where do you go to high school?
I go to Sarah High School. I'm a senior currently.
A senior, okay, good. And you going on to something else?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I don't know where I'm going, but I will be going to college and studying pre-med.
Okay, good. Pre-med, God, what is that, pre-med? Okay. Well, you're smarter and taller all at the same time, too. Anyway, Ben, tell us about your project.
At the local church on Alameda, the San Carlos Community Church of Christ, I renovated one of their old storage rooms that has not been used since 1950, and it currently serves as the San Carlos Leos Club meeting room, which I'm a co-founding vice president of, as well, so it kind of like double-dipped, helps. So that, we completely recarpeted, repainted, refurbished the entire room, and it's looking a lot better than it used to be.
Great. Well, congratulations, we're going to get you the, we'll get it to you, the right thing, and good luck in whatever you do. And I just want to make one comment. This is the future right here, as a lot of the Eagle Scouts were, and this is the kind of people that our community develops, and that's why a lot of us live here, and it's just a sparkling example of all the good things about it. So thanks again.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And we'll move on to the next item, which is public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda, and we usually limit this to two minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak on public comment tonight about something that's not on the posted agenda? I have no cards, but there may be someone that may want to speak. Anyone?
No.
Okay. Well, tonight, we have no public comment, okay. I'm sure we'll have plenty of public comment and some of the other items that we have. So move on to the consent calendar. So I think public comment was the cut point for PAC 65. Thanks, guys, for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cards, too. Cards, everything. Thank you. Sorry? I'm sorry? Okay, all right, I'm assuming it's 10A. Oh, maybe not, though. Okay. Thank you. All right. All right. Okay. So moving on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are supposed to be considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. So does anyone wish to remove any of the items from consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the items, all the items, Items 8, A through J of the consent calendar.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Boy, that was a tie, I think a three-way tie. Any discussion on anything? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Ober.
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. All right. Moving on. Item nine, reports to council. Reports to council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. 9A is a report on new surveillance technologies and how they are being used by other communities. Chief Roethlis, nice to see you.
Good evening, Mayor Grisilli, members of the City Council, nice to see you as well. As you can see, the update is a strategic planning item, actually. By November 15th, the police chief will present an informational report to the City Council on new surveillance technology and how it is being used by other communities. I know you have my written report before you, and so I'll just briefly go over that and then talk a little bit more about this issue. Obviously, just like many of your professions, those in the audience, and our other department heads, law enforcement goes through renaissance in technology, and we have, and it kind of can change the way we approach our job. It gives us new information, gives us better tools, and so there's across the board a lot of technology opportunities in law enforcement. But the three that receive the most attention, and those that I'll go over tonight, are, number one is license plate readers, two smart cameras, and three is data integration software. I think license plate readers have been the ones that maybe have gathered the most attention locally. Some communities locally have purchased license plate readers, and essentially what they are is infrared camera devices that are able to actually read license plates, run those through databases, and compare them against known stolen vehicles and other types of criminal vehicles. All this occurs very rapidly, and the systems are pretty effective in terms of being able to read and scan license plates. It allows us to do a number of things, obviously, to see if there's a wanted vehicle in a particular area, but it also allows us to actually program in a license plate to see if a particular suspect goes to a particular area. So what this system can do is, does a lot of different things, and it's a big tool. City of Tiburon has them, I think they have maybe one or two cameras to their city, it's a small town, easy to get into, not a lot of entrances and exits, they're paying, they paid about $133,000 for that. And then another city across on the east bay, Piedmont, is looking at a system, they're going to probably pay somewhere around $1 million for that system. So, you know, that's one of the most recent and effective tools. The other one is smart cameras. We're all very familiar with video surveillance, been around for a long, long time, but what's interesting in the development of cameras has been the whole smart camera system. Typically, in cameras, you would need somebody to sit there and monitor the camera system to see if anything's going on that's not supposed to be going on, you need a person to monitor it. Nowadays, you can actually program camera systems to watch, analyze, and give alarms on behavior. Probably the best example is in a Homeland Security application wherein some person comes to a train station, puts a suitcase down, or in some sort of package down, and then walks away and leaves that. That is a behavior that is not to be seen in that particular area, it is a suspect behavior, there's a suspect package, and the program in the camera can be designed to send an alarm to police when that happens. The system, the infrared camera systems can pick up also noise, sounds of fighting, sounds of breaking glass, and so that's kind of a new development, big development. And then lastly is the concept of data integration software. We have so much information available to us at our fingertips in law enforcement nowadays that it's virtually impossible for us, or any person or bank of persons, to sort through all of the data and make some sort of a sense out of it. So a new market is the concept of data integration software, and that is software that has the actual ability to drill into a variety of data sources simultaneously, find the relationships, and kind of make sense of it all. So for example, they could, a data integration software could be searching for a solution and could see a particular name in a San Carlos database and a phone number there, they could see a matching phone number on a phone registry from a suspect in Fremont, and they can find all of these different kinds of relationships and put a story together for you. And so this is another emerging technology. The concept then is, where does all this stuff go anyway? Once the authorities have all this information, where does it go and what do we do? In California, we have what's called State Threat Assessment System. It's basically fusion centers. These are centers in California, they're state and local, they're not federal, and they're run by state and local in our area. The sheriff actually is the chairman of the Board of Directors for our area. These are national crime, regional intelligence centers, and information goes there. They have analysts and a variety of people who are able to take this information and manage it, they have policies around it. For example, license plate information is only allowed to be kept in their's location for a year. And in some other areas, it's longer than that, but in our area, we keep, we only keep it for a year. So they develop policies around that. They actually have experts in terms of deciphering this and assisting in criminal investigations and those sorts of things. It's structured this way, essentially, basically two arms. If you see down the left, there is a main arm, Deputy Director Dan Mahoney, that is the National, the Northern California Regional Intelligence Center, and that is, that's the area that basically processes a lot of the information that I just spoke of. And on the right half, under Deputy Director Karen Sherwood, is what's called the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. It's also, this is basically a regional drug trafficking type of a task force. So the information that we gain from these systems, in fact, the organization that is currently looking at employing data integration is the NICRIC, and they are looking at data integration software right now and employing that in our region. So that concludes the update, and I am ready to take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Questions for the Chief? Mr. Ober.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. As I recall, the part of the genesis of this presentation, which was very good, thank you, was a conversation that you and Mr. Maltby and I had after the rash of door-knock burglaries, where we were talking about, was there something that we could do, other than what we're currently doing? So one of the things I'm kind of curious about is, you talked about in your first example of license plate readers, would that also have the capability of being able to search by type of vehicle, basically, saying that, we have a report that a white van was involved in some, potentially involved in some burglary, would we be able to pull up the license plates of white vans that had passed the camera?
Typically not colors, but makes and models, yes.
Okay. Okay, so there'd be some utility there.
Some utility there. Partial plates as well.
Partial plates as well, okay. You know, the, I think it's, I think it's pretty important to recognize that there's some, as you pointed out in your report, there's some pretty significant civil liberties issues and privacy issues here about, in my mind, about whether the community would be willing to accept something like that. On the other hand, I think we all heard, particularly during that rash of burglaries, that there was a lot of concern from people that they wanted something to be done, other than what was there. You talked about smart cameras as well. Are there other municipalities where they have looked at, for lack of a better term, subsidizing dumb cameras, just cameras that people have on their doorsteps, that, again, thinking of the door-knock burglaries, that would be a way of potentially generating images if people were willing to share them with the police?
You know, in the research that I did on it, I didn't find any communities that were subsidizing camera systems for personal residences, no. Doesn't mean it couldn't happen, I just couldn't find that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Chief, thank you very much, I appreciate the report. Item 9B is an update on a condition of PG&E natural gas line 147.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Jeff Maltby, City Manager. This report will be brief. There has not been a lot of activity on the PG&E line 147 issue since our last meeting. We're still on schedule right now to have a public hearing with the CPUC on November 18th. Our expert, Dr. Stevic, is currently analyzing and requesting additional information from PG&E on their records on line 147 and their testing data. Some of that he has received, some he's still waiting on. We have made a request to PG&E and to the CPUC to have the November 18th date moved back two weeks to allow Dr. Stevic to conduct some metallurgical testing on a section of line 147 that was removed last year. That testing process apparently takes about a week to conduct and then a week to analyze, so we're looking and seeking a date change for the hearing. As you might imagine, PG&E's attorneys have opposed that decision so far, but we'll find out what the judge has to say. That's the latest on line 147. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Maltby, I appreciate it. All right. Public hearings. 10A, consideration of introducing an ordinance to amend the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 18.22, sign ordinance, introduce an ordinance to amend San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 12.26, pardon me, 28, regulations for signs on city property. Ms. Costa-Sanders.
Thank you. Let me just get our presentation. Good evening, Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner. The proposed municipal code amendments would amend, update Chapter 18.22, that's the sign ordinance regulations, as well as Chapter 12.28, that regulates public, signs in the public right-of-way, as well as signs on public property. And this is consistent with the City Council's strategic objective for a city lease billboard to ensure the city's financial sustainability. The actions before you tonight, as indicated, are two ordinances. The Planning Commission did review and has recommended that you introduce changes to Chapter 18.22 to permit billboards on city property, and it is also recommended for consistency that the City Council amend Chapter 12.28, and that regulates the signs in the public right-of-way, as well as public property. These code updates would allow billboards on city property, it would require the Planning Commission to review and issue a certificate of design review. It would limit the height of a new billboard to 55 feet and limit the face of the billboard to 672 square feet, that would be measured from each side. We've also included additional findings that the Planning Commission would need to make in order to grant the design review approval, and that includes consistency with other state and federal regulations, that the sign be freeway-oriented, as well as a finding that the design has taken into consideration visibility from neighboring residential neighbors. These sign ordinance regulations have been reviewed by Clear Channel, as well as their attorney, and they've requested some additional modifications in addition to what was presented to you in the staff report. Those have been summarized in front of you, and I'll just briefly review them. It's very minor changes, and they've been reviewed by the city attorney, as well as staff, and we agree with these revisions. One is to amend the definition to reference that reader boards may be digital. And then in Chapter 18.22, just to add reference that it may also be digital and may be configured as double-sided. And then 12.28, we actually had a typo, the wrong code section was referenced, so the correct reference should be 18.22.050. And the motion before you is the introduction of the two ordinances, and that relates to signs on billboards and city property. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Questions? Mr. Ober.
Thank you. You know, one question I had is, I wanted to understand a little bit more You know, one question I had is, I wanted to understand a little bit more how the provision about taking into account views from neighborhoods, nearby neighborhoods, how that would actually work in practice?
Well, we have also added that the applicant needs to submit a visual simulation of the proposed billboard, and so we would need to kind of drive around and look at different vantage points to see how visible the billboard would be from nearby residential neighbors. We're not looking at can you see it from the hillsides, but the more immediate residential neighborhood, you know, would it be in direct line view of that neighborhood? So that was really the concern that was expressed at the Planning Commission. That's something we would evaluate on each billboard as it moved forward, and we would have that opportunity for Planning Commission input as well.
So, and maybe I missed this in the text of the proposed changes, but it identifies that this is an issue that needs to be considered. It doesn't set like metrics, or standards, or weights, or whatnot. That's left up to the Planning Commission.
Still subjective and discretionary, correct.
All right. So, but if we didn't have that language in there, then we wouldn't be able to use that as a point of saying
As a basis.
An application needs to be modified because it doesn't meet that.
Correct.
Okay. Related to that, with the two-sided billboards? How does that factor into the visibility thing? I was sort of visualizing billboard would be, if it was one-sided, would perhaps be oriented, so it would be visible only to the freeway, but if it's two-sided, then how is that, how can you ever not have an impact on the surrounding area?
Sure. Well, you can understand that the billboard wants the orientation to the freeway, because that's certainly the audience they're directing, that's where the most traffic is. So most of the billboard designs that you'll see are kind of a V shape, and so it really takes advantage of the orientation of both travel lanes. The single-sided would be more like a flat sign that's only viewed from one side, and that's, it's much more limited. I think as I was driving on the freeway, I did see one that was kind of limited one way, because the other had a large building on the other side. But most of them are going to be more that V orientation.
Okay. With the point of the V facing the freeway, essentially?
Correct.
Okay. So the backside of the V would presumably be dark, because they probably don't want to be wasting time advertising.
It's just open structure.
Yeah, open structure.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Grokot?
I just, I understand the idea of the Branston that's mentioned in the staff report. I have a little concern, maybe you could, you know, address it, is because we're talking about city-owned property, how does that then exempt city-owned property that's not adjacent to a freeway?
There's specific requirements that it be adjacent to a freeway.
Okay, all right.
So that's in the code sections.
All right, just wanted to be sure.
Other questions? Okay, Mr. Albert?
Thank you, just a quick follow-up. So in just general sort of overview terms, what is it about the amendment to the proposed amendments that it's being targeted at allowing something to happen that wouldn't have happened before, or denying something to happen that would have happened? So what's the overall thrust of this, if you had to summarize it?
The overall thrust is the City Council's objective to have a billboard, where it's currently prohibited in the sign ordinance. So we were looking at how, what are the best opportunities for that, and the limitation of city-owned property would be that you, there wouldn't be very many of those billboards throughout the community.
Okay.
There's also a separation that, in the state law, they have to be at least 1,000 feet apart. So there would be very limited opportunities for billboards, as you're aware, you don't want them throughout the community, so it's just freeway oriented.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I have one speaker card, Bob Black.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm concerned about, one, I just really don't like billboards on highways. That's, but further on that, there's a safety matter. Billboards are intended to attract your attention to their message, and digital billboard, I noticed there's one near the exit to Redwood City, and that's quite bright, and it's in motion, and it really is attracting your attention. And it's attracting your attention away from the business of driving. And I think that a billboard with, that is lit with traveling lights is especially dangerous, and we should not encourage that. And I really would like to see us not change our ordinance to allow that. Thank you.
Mr. Black, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Are there none, or entertain a motion to close the public?
You have a, somebody, put their hand up.
I'm sorry. Please, yeah, come on up, fill out a card afterwards, please, so we can get your name. And please come up. Sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay, I just, this item was new to me, but I just, it just dawned on me that the facilitator or presenter there was mentioning that she referred to most of them being of this design, this
B.
These, and it just resonated with me, most of them, I mean, how many are we talking? San Carlos is not that big. So, I mean, how many billboards are you talking about, when you say most of them?
There's only one that we're looking at right now, and they have to be 1,000 feet apart, so I don't think we're going to be, and the city doesn't own
Oh, okay.
The property all along the freeway.
Oh, okay, so, all right, so no, that's why I was wondering, why are we?
We're going to have to put up 30, no, no.
Yeah, okay, that's it, thank you.
It's a good question, it's a great question, but no, it's specific to what we're trying to do in one spot.
I got lost in the verbiage.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Otherwise, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm moving to close the public hearing.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. So, discussion or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd actually just like, relative to the one commenter's question, I'd be interested if staff has any perspective to share on whether there's studies that have talked about impacts on traffic accident rates and these type of billboards.
Nothing that I'm specifically aware of, but I'm being told through whispers that Caltrain, or Caltrans, rather, has studied it. And as has been mentioned several times tonight, the placement of billboards and electronic billboards is governed by state law in terms of safety requirements and design requirements and those kinds of things, proximity, but we can certainly, with the, with an application, should that application be forthcoming, present that information to the Planning Commission and the City Council.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, Lynn, sorry, Mr. Grokot?
The idea here was to do something that might offer revenue, is my understanding, and I'm wondering if staff knows what would be the difference in revenue if it were a static billboard, standard style billboard versus digital?
Yeah, I know that it would be significantly different, but I don't have a
And just to, again, reiterate, anything that, any application would eventually, would go through Planning Commission, and would it automatically come to us, or just go through Planning Commission?
Mr. Mayor, it would have to come to the City Council, because each one of these would be city-owned property.
Okay, so all of this will come back on specific items, and we'll have another bite of the apple, as they say, if there's a question. Anything else? Otherwise, entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, is this the motion that is on the handout that we have?
I don't know, I think it's the, there's one
It's the introduce an ordinance.
It's introduce an ordinance.
All right, that's the one that says I moved this?
There's two ordinances you're going to be introducing tonight.
One in our packet?
One motion?
It should be in your packet, and then the handout that you receive tonight is the suggested amendments. And the first two are for Chapter 18, which would be one of the ordinance amendments, and then the third one is Chapter 12, which would be the other ordinance amendment.
So which one do we read first?
Well, I don't think, I think you just, we'll introduce the ordinance saying that we'll put those amendments in, correct, Mr. Rubens?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. No, we don't have to read those, we just have to read the ordinance number. If, I'm the only one that has paper, or do I have to do this, or?
No, do I have the right one here?
There are two, right?
Okay, fine, it's ordinance, it should be right there. Ordinance of the city, introducing one.
All right. I'm moving the City Council to introduce an ordinance to amend the San
Need a number.
It's ordinance number 1466.
Okay, thank you. To amend the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 18.22, and introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 18.28 relating to signs and billboards on city property.
Is that appropriate?
You're making the actual ordinance, the first one that you're going to be introducing is just changes to Chapter 18, and the changes on the attachment that you got are just two amendments of part of it. So what you'd be doing is introducing the ordinance number that was mentioned, adopting amendments to
Why don't you let, why don't you let me do it? I've got it here on paper. Ordinance 1466, is it?
Right.
Introduce an ordinance of the City Council, pardon me, of the City of San Carlos, adopting amendments to the San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title 18, am I going okay? Of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 18.22, sign ordinance pertaining to billboards on city property, is that appropriate? With any changes that were appropriate and that were changes that we spoke about?
That would be appropriate, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
I guess I'm, sorry.
You can pass, go ahead.
No, well, I'm a little confused, because I want to know which one deals with the digital aspect.
Okay, I don't know that.
The first two suggested amendments deal with the digital aspect.
And they're included in this ordinance, Mr. Rubens?
They're included in the first ordinance, yes.
Okay.
Okay, based on the digital aspect of it, I'm going to vote no, then.
Okay, fine.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Gassily?
Yes.
Okay, so we need a second ordinance now?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance number
1467.
1467, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos, adopting amendments to San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 12.28, regulations for signs on city property pertaining to billboards.
Second.
Okay, moved in second.
Also includes
Yeah, all right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Gassily?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, and that's just introduction, introduction of these ordinances, they'll be coming back to us for final adoption.
And Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to prove that electronic stuff works, too.
Okay. Paper. Sorry, Ryan, sorry. Okay, next item we have is item 10B, which is a supplemental staff report for the San Carlos Transit Village Plan Development, PD, consideration of recommendations from the San Carlos Planning Commission regarding the approval slash adoption of, one, SEQA California Environmental Quality Act findings and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and, two, Plan Development, PD, planned and accompanying zoning map amendment to rezone the railroad corridor, the PD site, generally bounded by El Camino Real to the west. The Caltrain tracks to the east, the northern boundary of Assessor's Parcel, number 50-055-020 on the north, and the city's municipal boundaries on the south from Mixed Juice Station area, MU-SA Zoning District, and Mixed Juice South Boulevard, MU-SB Zoning District, to Planned Development, PD, Zoning District, and this is continued from the October 28, 2013 council meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Members of the Council. My name is Colette Manier. I'm the contract project planner that has been assisting city staff with processing this application. We have provided you with a supplemental staff report, which provides two additional alternatives for your consideration that we hope will facilitate your review and decision-making on this project. Tonight, I will briefly present those alternatives, also review clarification and additional changes to the staff report. Director Al Savay will present some information about the El Camino and Holly Street intersection, and RSG will be making a presentation on various aspects of economics about the project, and Legacy has brought with them additional visual simulations for the project. First, we have the applicant present, applicant proposal and the Planning Commission recommendation, which remove the fourth floor from Buildings 3 and 6. One of the alternatives, Alternative A, would additionally remove the fourth floor from Building 2, would increase or change the setback of the fourth floor along El Camino Real in the center portion of the building, Building 4, and on the Building 5, would step back the southwest corner of the fourth floor of that building. The, removing the fourth floors, result of the Planning Commission recommendation. The result of the recommendation in Alternative A would be to reduce the number of units to 260, although there is a provision that would allow the units to go up to 200, or 265, provided that the bedroom count was maintained at the same level. Alternative B would make changes to all of the buildings except for Building 7. Would remove the fourth floors from Buildings 1 and 2. The recommendation of the Planning Commission takes the fourth floor off Buildings 3 and 6. There would be additional, would be the same stepping back on Buildings 4 and 5. The result of those changes would reduce the number of units to 251, again, with the provision that, provided they did not exceed the bedroom count, they could go up to 265 units. This change would also remove the third floor from Building 8, which would reduce the commercial square footage by a little over, little more than 7,000 square feet. So in the staff report, we talked about removing corners, the southwest corner of Building 4, and the northwest corner of Building 5. I'd like to just clarify what the recommendation is. This is Building 4, and it is the central portion of that building, and the southwest corner of Building 6, where some additional articulation is included in Alternatives A and B. We have been in discussions with the applicant, and they ask that instead of the height of, I think, 38 feet or 39 feet, that Building 8 be allowed to go up to 42 feet. It would still be two stories, this is an Alternative B, but it would then match the height of Building 7, and additionally allow the ceiling heights that are characteristic of Class A office space. In the, in the recommendation for Alternatives A and B is the addition of requiring a use permit for restaurants that would go into the planned development, the commercial areas of the planned development, and the recommendation is a change to reduce, or to change that it would, instead of going to the Planning Commission, it could be acted upon by the zoning administrator. And again, in discussions, because of the reductions of units, and in discussions, staff is now recommending that the amount of funds that would be required from the developer for landscaping south of Arroyo Avenue be reduced from $400,000 to $150,000. This would accommodate landscaping, but not the installation of a sidewalk in this portion. Again, through things like the Grand Boulevard Initiative and other things, we would still be looking for opportunities to provide funding to add the sidewalks in those locations. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Savay to talk about El Camino and Holly.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. One of the issues that came up at the study session at your last meeting was concern over a was concern over an improvement measure to change the configuration of the intersection at El Camino Real and Holly Street. And the measure itself is included in, as discussed in your staff report on Page 5. And it's one of the conditions also recommended by the Planning Commission. The way this came up is it's not required for a reduction in the traffic impacts from the development project itself. It was actually an improvement measure that was considered as part of the traffic study in the environmental impact report. And there's a number of reasons for it. But what I want to do is quickly walk you through the existing configuration and what's proposed. And then a couple of options. Because after staff took a closer look at this over the last few days, we felt like there might be some options to retain some of the important benefits of this change in configuration and still leave some of the lanes that are there. So on the top, what you see is the existing configuration of El Camino Real. This is El Camino Real here. San Carlos Avenue, here's the Historic Depot, railroad tracks, and Holly Street crosses El Camino at this location. So this is in a northbound, traveling in a northbound direction on El Camino Real. And in the current configuration, you have two dedicated right-hand turn lanes, right here, that turn on to Holly Street. And then two straight lanes, going like this, forward lanes. And then one lane turning left onto Holly Street. So there's five lanes in this location. The intent of this improvement measure, as you know, and in just looking at this crosswalk, you can see that the crosswalk is at an angle, and it goes from here over to this corner. It's very long. And it's a very difficult crossing to make for anybody. And so the intent of this improvement measure was to narrow this area right here, this intersection. And that would achieve a couple of different purposes. So this proposed configuration that was looked at by the traffic engineer was to eliminate two of the lanes, two of the five lanes, and make it one right turn onto Holly Street, and then two through lanes north, and eliminate the left-hand turn lane and one of the right-hand turn lanes. So it'd be three total lanes. So what this did is it allowed to, as you can see, the crosswalk is now straight across. And the intent was to shorten that distance for people walking across. And did another, something else, is provided a pedestrian refuge at the center. There would be now room for a center island. And it also allowed for widening of the sidewalk at the corner of El Camino and Holly Street. And this is really important for pedestrian connectivity for people crossing here and going on down to the station. Now, if we went back to the existing configuration, then it would affect both of these situations. So staff wanted to propose a couple of different options. One option would be to leave it at three lanes and then make it add a right turn to this through lane. So there would still be three lanes, but just add an additional right turn to mimic what's there in the existing condition. In this configuration, we still get the benefits, the pedestrian benefits I discussed. If that wasn't acceptable, another alternative would be to add a left-hand turn lane onto Holly Street to add that back. So now we'd be adding a lane back. We'd get up to four lanes, and we'd have, and you could actually do all of these things if you wanted to. You could have the two rights, two throughputs, and then a left-hand turn lane. And what I think is mostly critical about this, after we look at this, all these options put together, is maintenance of this wide sidewalk right here. And this comes out into El Camino Real here. But we're still able to maintain most of the lanes through here. And so those are the options that we wanted to share with you today instead of just going back to the existing condition. And that concludes what I was going to talk about. We also have Jay Walter here, our Public Works Director.
So is RSG going to speak now, or? Okay.
Good evening, and my name is Jim Simon, Principal and President of RSG. Our role in this project was to do a few things, one of which was to look at the economics of the project. And I'll be talking about a few items that pertain to some questions that were presented to us by staff from the last meeting. The first was the ground lease and how that works with regard to this particular project. There were a lot of questions, I understand, about that. We did prepare, and I believe it was included in the agenda packet, a letter dated October 28, wherein we looked at how the ground lease would work in terms of both evaluation of the property as well as assessed and the taxes, the assessed valuation and the taxes associated with that property. So we'll talk first about that. A ground lease is basically an alternative mean of financing the acquisition of property. You can buy property and develop on it, or you can not buy the property and essentially pay through operating costs the ground lease, an annual ground lease payment, back to a lessee, which is what's being proposed here. The city itself leases property. There are many public agencies that do this type of thing. And depending on the nature of the ground lease, that can be what's deemed an assessable event, which, based upon the preliminary ground lease that we've seen, it's not yet been finalized, but the proposed terms of the ground lease are that it would be a 65-year term with two 17-year extensions, so essentially almost 100-year term. And then there's the other factor that you look at is what is the annual lease payment associated with that ground lease? Based upon what we have so far seen, the ground lease that's been proposed has a combination of a base lease payment plus participation rent that's shared, basically a profit sharing, if you will, between the ground lease, the lessor, in this case Legacy, and the lessee, which is Samtrans. So the amount of the ground lease payments, we took a look at in the letter from the 28th, and essentially concluded that the base rent alone was bringing the property close to or above market value for land, based upon land prices today in the market, which, you know, generally range from about $75 a square foot for land, for developable land, to $100 a square foot. The base ground lease payment that's proposed is an annual payment of about $850,000 a year, excluding the participation rent that I was talking about earlier. As we talked about in our memo, there's an additional participation, which would bring that total lease payment to anywhere from 10 and 1/2 to 10% of annual revenues, which would raise that closer to $1 million a year. By our estimation, that seems like a high side, on the high side for a ground lease. We base that upon, you know, the analysis that we provided, which I won't get into too much detail, other than to say that would yield a land value significantly higher than what you would otherwise pay for land today. So that's how we looked at that. But needless to say, based upon even the base rent alone, the property would generate sufficient property taxes and an assessed value that we commensurate with what you would have if you bought and owned the property today. So then we get into the project economics and how that works. The, back in July, we did an analysis where we looked at the proposed project, which at the time was 280 units, as well as an alternative, which basically had an entire floor removed from the entire project across the board, which would bring it to about 200 units. From that analysis, we concluded that the proposed project would be financially feasible, generating a small profit over and above market returns, about $1 million. Project costs would be about $143 million, excluding land, because remember, it's a ground lease, and compared to the value, which is $144 million, which is, again, net of the ground lease payment which comes out of that. So there was a small delta there. The 200, two-unit scenario was upside down by about $5 million. So that would not be a feasible scenario. We didn't look at the other permutations that have been discussed by staff earlier tonight. The way we looked at this valuation is the way that most investors will be looking at a project like this, which is using a method called the discounted cash flow analysis, which is how investors are typically reviewing these types of projects, particularly ones that have mixed-use components. That involves looking at the revenues that come off the project over a series of years, as well as the value at some point in time in the future, which in this case is 12 years. That is kind of the way it's done. I know there are other approaches that have been discussed, some of which may include construction plus land value, which is certainly one way to look at it. That's a construction approach. You can also look at it through other means, like a direct capitalization, where you take the total net operating income and break it down. But we, you know, feel confident that our conclusions are accurate. I believe that covers the questions that were raised at the last meeting. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that come up.
Okay, thank you. All right, so what we did last time is we had a couple, three questions each. Hopefully, that'll be sufficient for the first round. So does anyone have any questions of any of the three people or anyone else tonight? Mr. Obert, go ahead. Let's keep it to a couple, three, and then we'll just keep moving.
Okay. Well, let me sort of go in reverse order of speakers and ask Jim if you wouldn't mind responding to this one. You said that the, as best we can tell, because it is not fully defined yet, the ground lease and the participation rental payments are significantly above market. What did you mean by that in terms of dollar terms or percentage terms? Just so I can calibrate it. Because that leads into my second question, but I'd just like to get a sense of that.
Well, we talked about this in our letter on the top of Page 2, from the 28th, where we talk about ground lease payments are normally between 1% and 3% of the market value of property, which would, which, if you just took the base rent alone, that is roughly 4% of the value of the land. So that was one of the reasons why we concluded the value was high. So, you know, if you looked at participation rent and included that, you could be at a value of about $200 a square foot, which is, you know, far above what anyone would pay for land of this size.
Or maybe in terms of simple ratios, when you're saying that typically it's between 1% and 3%, and this is clocking in at 4%, then one could argue that this is someplace between a third and, what? Three times more expensive, four times more expensive than what it might be otherwise? For the ground lease alone.
Right.
Second question, following off of that, is, did you run the economics looking at a more typical market-based ground lease? In other words, something, let's say, that clocked in at around the 2% level? I'm just splitting the difference of the 1% to 3% range.
And we did look at it based upon the, just the base rent alone. And I, and like I said, that did come to a total value of $77 a square foot. So while the percentage itself may be a little bit high, $77 a square foot is within reasonable, you know, reason for market right now on that land. So, you know, I excluded the participation rent because I thought that was, put it way above, you know, the $200 range, as I mentioned. We did not go any further. We, you know, there's lots of ways to look at rent and these types of factors. You have to look at a variety of metrics. So to just limit it to the 1% to 3% alone would have been probably a little bit off because I would have dropped it down too much.
I guess what I'm, and maybe this is in your analysis, and I just missed it. But what I'm trying to understand is, you described two scenarios where you talked about one project as proposed and one with basically a floor chopped off-
Right.
-across the entire. And that the first one was, had positive economics. The second one, you said, was upside down by $5 million.
Correct.
And what I'm, maybe I misunderstood. I'm trying to understand, what happens if you put a market value for the ground lease into those calculations? Or you, does the lower one, for example, where you chop off the first floor, the top floor, does that still end up being upside down?
I guess what I'm saying is that the ground lease that's been proposed, I believe, is above market. We made adjustments for that in our pro forma, which we feel, you know, effectively dealt with that, to bring it down to just the base only. And, you know, that's commensurate with market.
And that's where you ended up from your analysis? I think it was like around 2.4%, something like that?
You know, it comes to, that would include the participation rents. But the participation rent also yields you a land value of almost $200 a square foot. So that's why you can't just look at these and sort of, you know, just in isolation of each other, you're simply have to look at it altogether. You know, our conclusion is if you have a land value that comes out to $196 a square foot, that's too high. It doesn't matter what the percentage is. So that's the way, the reason why we concluded that the 850 was a more reasonable number, even, you know, even though it was not the entire rent that they were proposing.
I have to get on that. I'm not completely clear, but I will pass the baton.
Okay, because this is a lot of inside baseball that, quite honestly, I, but anyway, that's, it's a report.
Well, just to be clear, the reason I was asking it because it fundamentally talks about the scale of the project, which is what we're trying to address.
Okay. Mr. Growcott?
I'll try to carry through a little bit on what Mr. Obert's questioning. So my questions all have to, these three or whatever are all directed at you.
All right.
The first one is, I'm just curious. It's empirical evidence only, but I've watched a project go up in Menlo Park that sits between the Stanford Mall and, it's very close, so it's very close to the Menlo Park-Palo Alto border. And it looks to me like it's wood frame, it's two, maybe three stories at the most. It's got a lot of driveways that go in and out. Looks like it's parking garages, you know, individual parking garages underneath and so forth. But I look at that project and the size of it, it's, to me, that's very acceptable. And I really question how something like that can go in on land that's obviously valuable. And I would think that market conditions in Menlo Park are similar, or possibly even, being that close to the university, a little higher when you talk about land values than what we have here in San Carlos on land that's owned by a public agency. So I'm really struggling with why I get told, "Well, we have to build this big of a project," or it doesn't pencil out. And yet I watch something go up in Menlo Park that looks to be much smaller scale, and somehow that penciled out. What are the factors that could be involved?
Part of it could be the parking costs. I mean, this is a subterranean parking garage, which has a significant cost to it. The project you described didn't sound like it had that.
No, it does not.
On a per-square-foot basis, that can be a significant cost.
Okay.
You're talking sometimes, you know, today, probably, you know, 40, as much as $40,000 of space for subterranean parking. And, you know, that's obviously, you know, a cost that the entire project bears.
Right.
So.
And would it, would there be a factor of it being condos that get sold versus? You're talking, you looked at, I understand your report and your analysis, so I'm kind of putting you on the spot. But was for rentals, but if this, if it's a condo project, it's, the numbers work out differently? And could you speak to, that's another thing that's come up, is, why isn't this a condo project? And we get told, well, it can't be because it's ground lease. But then I know people who own, I have a very good friend who owns a home, a single-family house on Stanford land. It's ground lease, he owns the house. Stanford owns the land. So I don't know what to believe. I don't do this for a living, you know, I just, so, empirical evidence again.
I'll be honest, I can't think of an example of a condo project that's on a ground lease, but that doesn't mean they're not done. I can't say I would be the best authority on that.
And then, then my last question has to do with, right now especially, it's a concern of mine, so I'm going to ask you the question on it, of the project site north of Holly is completely residential. And I'm having trouble with that because what I'm looking at is, on the other side of El Camino, it's completely commercial along El Camino. Now, if you get back one block behind on Laurel, now you get into some multifamily, some single family, but it's all residential. And I have concerns with sandwiching this one little commercial strip on the west side of El Camino between multifamily residential and more multifamily residential. So I guess my question to you is- to you is, what would it do to the numbers if, if we decided, you know, uh, we, we don't like all this housing in one place like this at the north side? Could we, could we introduce some commercial to it? How would that affect the numbers? And again, I understand you're putting you on the spot.
I would, I would say, I would say this. Um, you know, first of all, in this market, the demand for housing is very strong.
Very high.
So, you know, and, and, and by and large, and I think most of the council are as aware of this, the commercial components of this project won't carry the development. It's going to be mostly the residential prod, components of the project. Um, so in terms of where those residential components are placed, it's probably more of a planning issue than it is an economic issue, because really, they're fairly in much in close proximity. I don't know, you know, what a, what a, you know, you know, street-level residential we're not talking about here. If it was street-level residential and was significantly impacted, that might lease for a little bit less. But again, the market's very strong, so at least at the moment, that, that may be difficult to estimate if there's an acute impact, at least on the economics.
When you look at economics like that, though, we're, uh, we're, we're looking at a point in time, those two can, it's, it's like a wa, you know, two waves, right? They change.
Yeah, we're looking at it now and, and, you know, based upon, you know, both published reports and investor, you know, conf, investor indexes and things of that, you know, in terms of how we make our estimations of what, what that, what's valuable and where it will be headed.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions on this side? Anybody? Ms. Clapper?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure who, who will answer this, but I'll leave it out there. I'm, I'm curious, in looking at the alternative A and B and reducing the number of units, how the, um, how that balances out with the parking that is, is currently set up in the project?
The, um, conditions of approval that are provided to you for A and B do acknowledge that there would be a reduction in parking, or that it, it could be reduced in, uh, there could be a reduction in parking, um, to reflect the reduction in the number of units.
So you're talking about the physical construction, that it actually, or just that fewer units would be required, so there would be excess parking spaces?
Correct. And that they could reduce the underground garages. Again, we would be looking at that in the context of design review for the, the individual phases or buildings.
Okay. Um, I, I was interested in knowing if there were, if, if that's a possibility, that we're looking at a different configuration of the parking spaces to match up with, um, a different number of units, depending on what, what is decided. I was interested in knowing for some of, some of the buildings where there are not that many driveways or access going in and out, for example, in particular, um, buildings five and six, the access to the parking garages is, is directly off of El Camino Real, whereas the other buildings, the driveways go out into parking areas, and it gives them more of an option to be queuing. Or maybe I'm not seeing from the drawing where there's a place for people who are coming out of, um, of those buildings to be able to queue up. It looks like they're going directly out onto El Camino, very close to the Holly intersection. I'm looking at, at page A, 1.1.
The driveway, because the, the property is becoming narrower, the driveway is shallower, but it's still, it goes in and then goes into two garages on either side. It's, all of them have the same kind of T-shaped, a driveway that comes down, and then you turn into the central drive aisle of each of the parking garages. And there's still one under building five and another one under building six. Okay, so there would be no option for having some of the traffic from building six coming out into the, into that parking area between six and seven, to spread out the volume of the, of the traffic from those buildings. You know, if that's, if, if we did that, basically you'd have to add another driveway, and it would eliminate most of the parking, at least on one side. Well, probably would eliminate most of the parking, because the, the drive aisle would have to, um, slope down in order to meet the grade of the floor. You couldn't then use it also to load parking. So if you placed, uh, another garage entrance, those 19, 20 parking spaces in that area would likely be almost all eliminated. Um, but, but that, you know, that could be, I mean, that, that can be something that is required, but it has some implications.
Okay. Um, see, and looking at building, let's see, building number two. So right now, building number two, the parking garage, actually, that, the access to the parking garage is through building number three. So you go underneath building number three to get to the parking spaces that are under building number two. Am I reading the plans correctly? Or is there some other way to get into the parking?
No, you're, you're, you're correct, that the, the entrance into the single garage that goes underneath both two and three is from the south end of building three.
So that's, at this, given these drawings, at, um, it's 100, that was 126 regular spaces plus 30 tandem spaces. So we've got 156 spaces that we're accessing with the one driveway. And I guess I, I have a concern here again, especially because that faces the garage entry for building number four, that why there, why there couldn't be another driveway entrance for building number, not our parking garage entrance in building number two, down by building number one. It just, it just seems like we're, we're funneling the traffic, the, the vehicles, when they are being driven into relatively few spaces.
Again, you, you are correct, and that's both, I mean, from an operational perspective, that's also to avoid having, uh, a number of different points of driveways coming out. So they were specifically designed to provide only two access points. There is a third point driveway, but that only goes into the emergency vehicle access at the north end of, uh, the property. Additional driveway access points could be required. There's a cost implication, as well as an implication for how much surface parking can then be provided. And I would suggest that that may be something you would, um, address to Legacy when they make their presentation and provide you with the additional visuals, uh, visual simulations.
I, I think that probably hit my three. Did I get enough little sub-questions in there that that qual, okay, I'll, I'll wait.
Ms. Collins?
I think this question is probably for, uh, Collette. Um, in your presentation, you're talking about alternative B, and, and I believe you said that building eight at two stories could be up to 42 feet?
That's correct. The, uh, draft conditions, I believe, is, I'd have to open up my, my big binder, I think is 38 or 39. I generated that number simply by subtracting the height of this, of the middle story. Um, in discussions with the applicant and looking at the floor-to-ceiling, um, interior elevation that is customary for, um, Class A office space, they asked that we look at providing some additional height, so it would be able to, they'd be able to provide that interior height that's, that's characteristic of that type of office space.
Well, it, it ends up only being about four feet lower than if it was a full three stories, because I think that, at three stories, it was 46 feet. Is that, am I not reading that correctly?
Again, we're talking through the roof ridge. Yes.
I think, uh, through the chair, that's, that's also something that we ought to ask the architect to address as well, and maybe they could walk us through the building. But there's high points and low points in the building. I think that there's some articulation in the roof line. There are some pitched areas of the roof and where you'd probably peak up to, to that level. There may be other levels that would be lower than 42 feet.
Okay. Now, I, my concern is that we're knocking off a whole floor, we're only knocking off four feet. So I think, uh, we need to look at that pretty, pretty closely. If we're going to take off a floor, then we, there needs to be a-
Floor.
You know, it needs to be a significant height reduction. When I looked at the video, uh, that was one of my concerns, and I thought that was the moment, you know, that I decided that, it seemed to me that three stories was just too big. And so if we're going to lower it, we need to lower it. But I, we'll look at that, I suppose. But I'll need to be convinced that it needs to be up to 42 feet. Yeah, there's a lower.
The, um, height as it is currently is 49 feet, um, nine inches.
So 49 feet with three stories?
49, nine inches. And again, that's to the, to the maximum roof ridge, and the recommendation is 42.
Okay. So basically, 16-plus feet per floor, uh, 42 still seems like a little high, but...
Well, again, it's, it's, if, if we went just to the, the roof plate, but again, because it has a, a slope, some of that isn't, um, it, it doesn't extend across the whole building. It doesn't provide, if you understand.
Well, I assume we have some discretion there.
We do.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think my other question was for Mr. Savay. You mentioned, uh, the, the option to put back in the left-hand turn lane at Holly Street from northbound El Camino. Um, as I recall before, there was some, some evidence that, uh, that is a very little-used lane, that, uh, and I, I don't remember what the numbers were. Do you remember what, how often the left-hand turn lane onto Holly from northbound El Camino was used?
You know, I don't recall the numbers. However, I have discussed that with our Public Works Director and perhaps Mr. Walter knows. I think he does.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. That number is about nine vehicles in the peak hour in the morning, and I think it was 17 in the afternoon. So it is a very lightly-used movement. Uh, the traffic could turn left at a point further south on El Camino, much, uh, as easily or go beyond to the north. So it's not a move that is essential to that intersection at this point.
Okay. All right.
Add you a quick follow-up on that?
Sure.
Percentages?
Percentage, you mean in terms of the?
Total vehicles going through that intersection, you just-
Peak hour number was, peak hour number was somewhere in the range of, of, say, 15, 50 for all movements. Right. So, um, less than 20, and so that's going to be, you know, um, uh, probably 7, 8%, something like that. So it's, it's pretty small comparatively.
Or, or Mr. Collins, we could look at it as 40% of the council uses that turn.
Are you, are you, are you?
I'm done, and thank you, Mr. Olbert.
Thanks, Mr. Walter. Mr. Savay, I had the, I had the same issue when we get to the, to that thing. The way it appears here, if you put a left-hand turn lane, you're only going to have one dedicated lane going north. And then one of the other lanes is a shared lane. Is that the way it's looking to me?
Um, are you saying if you put the left-turn lane back?
Right.
Or leave it out?
Leave it out. Well, if you put it in, you, you've got a lane here, and I only see one lane dedicated going north.
Right.
And I think we need two lanes going north, because if you, if you share that second right-hand turn lane, you're going to have, in my opinion, you're going to have the same problem that I indicated before with one. You're going to have people that are going to just back right, all the way back up, because they're going to get into that lane. They're going to see a straight arrow, figuring, "Oh, great." And then they're just going to, it's, it's just not going to, it's not going to work.
Well, aside from the left-turn lane issue, there was two proposed going through and one right in the proposed configuration.
Right. Of course, I don't think that's a good idea. That's what I'm saying. I think we should have two left. I think we should, quite honestly, leave it the way it is, to be quite blunt. But I mean, I don't know how else to do that. Maybe that's option C. That's my option. But I, you know, having driven that a number of times, I think if you dedicate, the way it looks here, there's going to be one lane going north, dedicated.
One dedicated.
One dedicated lane, and that's, that's a recipe, in my opinion, for disaster. But my opinion only, other people only have other options on it, but-
Discussing.
I, you know, we can discuss it. But that's the only real question I had, uh, at the moment. So, uh, Mr. Olbert, more questions?
Yes, thank you. Um, let me follow up on, on that one, because I had a, a different angle I wanted to ask about it, which is, uh, did staff consider, um, what would happen if we, um, because I know, I understand the concern about pedestrian crossing safety at that point. What if we were to eliminate that crossing there? In other words, and basically channel people down towards, uh, where the depot is and have them cross there?
Yeah, I, I think you could eliminate that crossing, um, there, and that's, again, something that I would, uh, refer, uh, for consideration to the Public Works Director. But I think the, the key issue here, aside from the pedestrian, you know, refuge area at the middle, is really the width of that sidewalk, um, in front of the buildings there. I think that's the most critical issue, and how you get, how you get to that, um, is really something we need to look at more closely. And if Mr. Walter has any other ideas about that. But I think you could eliminate the crosswalk altogether as well.
And, and not really do an awful lot.
Yeah.
Not negatively impact pedestrian flow a lot.
I think so.
Yeah.
Again, I'd prefer that to, uh, Public Works Director.
And if I can just add to the confusion on the, uh, turn lanes, another option that we didn't show would be to have two right-hand, dedicated right-hand turn lanes and two dedicated, uh, northbound lanes and eliminate the-
We also have the left-hand turn.
You'd be eliminating the left-hand turn lane, and you'd, you'd be reducing the number of lanes by four.
I've never turned left, so that's why I never-
And in response to Councilman Olbert's, uh, question on pedestrian crossing at that location, yes, I agree. Uh, it's possible to eliminate that particular crossing, because you would, you would have one that would remain, that's on the immediate north side of that intersection, and you have two that will be down at San Carlos Avenue and, uh, El Camino Real. So certainly not needed from a purely a number standpoint for pedestrians to cross there.
Got it. Um, the, my, the second question I had, um, I noticed that there was a proposed modification to D1, which was to reduce the, the, uh, contribution from 400 grand to 150 grand, um, for the landscaping and sidewalk, except there would be no sidewalk now, south of Arroyo, so I understood that. Um, I, I'd be interested in staff's reaction to what if we eliminated that completely. Um, I mean, I, I know what it, I know the, the impact on the developer, which is, saves them $150,000, but, but, uh, what's the impact on us?
Well, the, going back to the, um, resolution that was passed back in '79, one of the, 2003, I'm sorry, um, one of the, uh, policies in that resolution was that the city, when, when a project comes through, the city should look at the entirety of El Camino Real and plan for the whole thing, all the way down to the border with Redwood City. And, um, you know, during the planning commission hearings, and there, there was a good deal of discussion, "Well, what's going to happen with all the dirt that's, that's south of Arroyo, south of the Caltrain Depot?" And so historically, you know, we've had, there's really nothing there, other than, than dirt. So, uh, one of the ideas was to, um, get some landscaping, get some improvement there, so that we do have, uh, a significant streetscape improvement south of Arroyo for the whole city, for the entirety of, of the, uh, El Camino Real on that side. So that's, we would lose, um, the greening of that area south of Arroyo. You, you wouldn't have, um, trees there. Um, if, if you did have the trees or, uh, a way to do that, it would significantly improve El Camino, the, the way El Camino Real looks and, and, uh, uh, you know, and present, uh, a, a very big improvement to the streetscape there.
I'm, just to be, make sure, I want to make sure I understand. How far south of Arroyo are we talking about landscaping?
All the way down to, around where Duncan Motors is, around that area.
So basically, almost to the city limits?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, and just, so, so Mr. Berg doesn't get his hopes up, I was actually thinking the money might go someplace else. But, um, the, the other questions, the other questions that I had actually related, uh, Mr. Mayor, to, um, items that were in the staff report, but were not the subject of the presentation. So you'd want to hold those for later, or ask them now, or what?
We got one more question to ask this time, this round. Go ahead. I'm just trying to keep it to three, so we could get, otherwise it's a monotone.
No, that's fine. I'm, I'm just, just trying to understand what the scope.
Go ahead.
Um, there was, uh, I had asked a question, I believe, last time, and others were interested in it as well, about the, the proportion of the length of the property that has a building on it as you're sort of walking north. And there was a comment in there about, uh, in the staff response that talked about, um, the percentages and whatnot. And I think it made reference to, um, a requirement that the city has, but it wasn't clear to me whether the proposed project exceeds the requirement or not. So I wanted to get some clarification on that. Do you need a specific reference on that?
I think you're asking if there, I think the question that you had asked at the last meeting is, is there a requirement that sets a maximum length for a building? And it's contained in the, um, multiple residential and carried forward into the mixed-use station area of 125 feet. Within that section, though, it also says that if the building is sufficiently detailed and articulated, that that, uh, requirement can be set aside, the 125 feet. So there's a, a, uh, an exception or an exemption provision built into that section that deals with the maximum building length.
Okay. And, um, and I, I think I remember from another analysis that staff had provided that there are some sections of the buildings that are more than 125 feet, correct?
That's correct.
So it does, in a, it- So it does, it exceeds the provision, but it's presumably because the determination was made that there's sufficient articulation to justify the change.
It is also included in the list of flexibility. In the very beginning of the conditions of approval, there is a section that outlines the various standards that are being, that are being applied flexibly to allow the project, and that was included in there. But yes, I think we would agree that the buildings have been detailed and articulated to a point that those, the findings about, the finding necessary to grant that, to exceed that hundred and twenty-five feet would be something we would recommend in support of, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The city manager reminded me, and I guess I missed it because I was so concentrated on the staff reports, that the applicant has a presentation also. So, Mr. Berg? Sorry to skip you there. How long is your presentation, Mr. Berg?
Mine is very brief. We have the architect and landscape architect that, in response to prior requests, are going to be going through some visuals, some animations of the project.
How long is that going to take?
Twenty minutes.
Thank you.
So I'll be introducing, you know, Sherry Scott and Paula Terry, who've been up here before, are focused on addressing a variety of questions that came up at the last meeting and trying to give a broad visual perspective of the project to the council and to the community at large. I think one of the things that I want to highlight, and then I'll be out of here, and you can ask questions of me later if you need to, is that I want to, you know, thank you, the Greater East Side, the whole community and the staff for this long process. You know, and I think that we benefit from having a staff that's come up with all these range of alternatives that start from a planning commission recommendation, which was based, was a further modification of a plan that we spent a year or so working with the East Side to evolve and to address their concerns. We, as I think most of you know, we spent most of a year and about eleven meetings on a regular basis with them, coming up with what were their issues and concerns. They weren't just specifically related to this project. They were, there are other things in the, in the community that they cared about, that the city was dealing with and other things. But as to the architecture, the outcome of that was sometime in the spring, the East Side published and gave to each of the council members a list of some key criterion regarding the mass and height of these buildings, which I will paraphrase and not putting words in anybody's mouth, and I'm not reading it, dictating it. But basically was Building One, that the backside of Building One, the back row of units to be three stories. And each of these scenarios accomplishes that to, and then with some scenarios going further. Building Two, to do the same thing, and to the southern end, to take more of those fourth-story units away. Building Three, to eliminate the fourth story entirely. Building Four, fourth story, not an issue. Building Five and Six, fourth story, not an issue. Building Eight, the third story being an issue. So that was, you know, that was out there. And if you look at the alternatives that are being presented, I'll say Alternative A, which is, I think, the staff's recommendation, you know, has us going further than even that set of requests that had occurred, or requirements, or whatever you want to call them, from the East Side that were, you know, published after this extensive process that we concluded with them. So, you know, you can certainly go to Plan B if that's your, if it's your pleasure. It's far beyond what I think anyone has asked so far that we've seen. But there's a wide range of alternatives, and I look forward to the presentation occurring, everyone having an open mind, and let's get a great project here, and let's move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berg.
All right. Thank you, council members. I think from the last presentation, there was a lot of numbers shown about the evolution of the project, heights of the project, how much mass had been reduced. And I think what we heard was, okay, well, that's, that's great, but what does this, what does this feel like? What are we experiencing? How big are these buildings when we walk down the street? And so my goal today is to, is to illustrate as best I can by comparing the proposed project to a couple of existing examples, compare and contrast, and then showing some existing conditions, and then also showing animations of the proposed project. So I'll start with just a compare and contrast to a project that's very similar to ours in terms of concept, which is Pacific hacienda. And this is the site plan for Pacific hacienda, which is right across the street. The proposed, the actual built set back here is between ten and fifteen feet. So the street setbacks are ten feet, or, sorry, fifteen feet. For some reason, this one says fourteen foot eight. So they must have had a slight exception there, fifteen feet. And then ten feet adjacent to the neighbors here. So the setback from the street is landscaped, and we'll have some images showing that. And then the courtyard that opens to the street is setback further. This is probably about a forty-foot setback to the building in the courtyard here. And so this is the, the building type that we've adopted for our project, which is, if this were El Camino, we have three- and four-story buildings here with courtyards that open onto the street. It's very different than an enclosed courtyard that has no opening to the street. So this is a portion of our site plan. This is Building One. Again, we have a three- and four-story building around a courtyard. And just to show our setbacks here, it varies, but it's twenty-three, five, thirty-two, six, seventeen. It's lots of ins and outs. And the, when you go back to the courtyards, these courtyards are quite deep, the deepest one being at Building One, which is over ninety-six feet from the street here. This is Building Two, and you can see the, the building massing really steps back. The setback here is nineteen foot nine, and then at the courtyard is sixty-four feet. And this actually really affects your perception of the height of the buildings, with the higher portion of the building being further from you from the street, really sort of mitigates the height of those, of those elements. There's also been a lot of talk about 1001 Laurel, so I thought I would just do an overlay. The project approaches there are quite different. The footprint for 1001 Laurel is the gray area here. It's an internal courtyard building, so the street face is rather flat. There's not an opening into the courtyards. So if we were to line up 1001 Laurel, here's four of them that goes across Holly Street. So the perception of 1001 Laurel along El Camino is quite a different experience walking down the street than what we're proposing, which is much more of the setbacks that you can see at Pacific hacienda. Again, here's the 1001 Laurel going, going south. Just to compare and contrast, this is Building Eight, which is the building that is seen as being too large, but it's a third or a fourth the size of 1001 Laurel, just to give you a sense of scale. Okay, so what does that mean, having a fifteen-foot setback with planting? This is the, this is the streetscape for Pacific hacienda, where we have a nice walking sidewalk. We have planting setback behind the walk. This actually doesn't have street trees, which we're proposing on our project, but it still has a rather lush feel. And so this is what it feels like to walk past Pacific hacienda. You can start to feel this openness here on the left. This is, this is the courtyard to your left. Some raised plant or different heights of planting here, terrace feel, some mature planting. And this is, this project is about ten years old, more or less. So the planting here is representative of mature planting at ten years. Okay, so what does that mean when you don't have a setback with planting? You have a more urban condition, where you have the building that's brought right to the edge of the sidewalk. And so this is the condition at 1001 Laurel, which is very different. It does have street trees, but behind the sidewalk, it's just, there's, there's no planting. And so you can see it's a very urban edge, it's a very hard edge. And this is not what we're proposing on our project. Just also show some existing photos of what's there now in terms of vegetation and screening. You can see the street trees, the median trees here, south of Holly on El Camino. The median trees here, north of Holly, are pretty much a solid wall, all the way up through, from Buildings Four through Building Two. So it's quite lush already. This doesn't include the street trees that we're proposing or the planting behind the sidewalk. So there's really three levels of screening before we even get to the project, which you can see the berm, wake up here, but the berm for the Caltrain is back here. Existing street trees on San Carlos Avenue and more trees south of Holly. Okay, so again, what does tree, what do these street trees look like after ten years? And so going back, just looking at the height of the trees for Pacific hacienda, they're at least twenty-five feet, approaching thirty feet, really pretty much fully screening these, these buildings when you look at them straight on. This is looking down the street. So the trees on the right, these are the trees that are twenty-five to thirty feet here. And then on the left, you can see the more mature trees that are probably, I don't know, forty years old, thirty to forty years old. But even at ten years, you get a significant amount of screening. And so as we go to the simulations, I think we have a fairly accurate representation of vegetation at ten years. Okay, and so I'm going to have to exit the slideshow here, because the videos would not work in PowerPoint. Okay, so what does it all mean for our project? If we walk north. Old County Road, I'll start on El Camino. Okay, so here we are. We're at the intersection of Holly. We're going to walk north on El Camino Real, adjacent to the property. These are the existing median trees here. These are the proposed streetscape planting trees. And then we have our setback vegetation, which is a variation of, there's actually quite a bit of variation there. I don't know if you want to.
Existing redwoods as well.
And the existing redwoods, which we'd preserve as well. So Building Four is passing on your right here. This is the entry to Building Four, which is a little bit more of an open plaza feel, going back to terrace vegetation, some mature trees. There's also some individual stoops that come down. This is the first driveway entrance here.
There's a variety of scales, the plant material that you're walking past as well, that's helping to create spaces for pedestrians as they're walking, as they're walking up the street.
Yeah. And each building entrance, I think Paul's done a great job of creating a little mini plaza. So each building entrance has a little bit different character. Some have benches, some have fountains.
Talking about both.
Some have both. So that's the experience of walking with the setbacks that we're proposing, with the vegetation that we're proposing along El Camino Real. And walking along Old County Road. This is the existing, what we're, what we're showing here are the existing street trees, or not street trees, but existing redwoods we're proposing to retain. The planting that you're seeing along the building here is just the planting that's going to be on the proposed property. So this is the planting that we can actually control, that we can guarantee will be part of the project. We're not showing additional planting on the berm at this time. There's a few short trees here that are existing that are there to remain. But the proposal is to plant the berm as, as fully as we can, but because we don't know the parameters, we're not speculating, and we're leaving it blank at this time. So Building Four just passed. This is Building Three. And Building Two. These, the heights of Building Three and Building Two are at three stories all the way along now. Building One here does have a little bit of a four-story. You can see it peeking up back there, but it's really not that so different from the third floor of Building Two, as you can see, because of the setback, the perception of the fourth floor is it really, the distance, again, from the street to the fourth floor, I think mitigates the height there. So that's the intention of having three, three stories of Building One along Old County Road, and then stepping back to four stories. Okay, so now what I'd like to do, since we have the walk-bys, is let's, let's take a look at each building. Because as you're walking by, presumably you're watching where you're going and not looking at each building. So we'll take a look at each building in a little bit more detail, which I think will help clarify what distance will do for the height of the building. So again, this is Building One. So this is one of the only buildings left that actually does have a four-story element. But both adjacent to Old County Road and also El Camino, we're stepping down to three stories. And so, again, with the distance back away from the street, I think the stepping of the building really helps to mitigate that height. So this is the wing of the building that's directly adjacent to the street here with some planting. And here's the courtyard. So this setback here to this building, I'm going to pause this right here, is, this is the four-story portion of the building, which is in the courtyard. So you see the three-story building in front, the four-story building in back. But because it's so far back, the perception from ground level is that they're very similar height. And again, that's just due to the distance and perspective. Sculpting down, softening these corners again with a three-story element at the corner, and then stepping back up again, it creates some variation in the building form and just softens the height there. So there's a couple of slides, going back to the slide presentation here. Just as an example, just to show from real world, I know there's been some discussion about how do we, how do we show what we're proposing here, and there's been some discussion about story poles. But really, we have such a good example of the massing that we're proposing at Pacific hacienda. You can see that the slide on the left is Pacific hacienda. Get my cursor to work here. Three stories. This is actually a three-and-a-half-story element, stepping up to four stories. And so they're doing a similar sculpting at the corners that we're proposing here, with Building One being four stories, stepping down to three, a variety of roof forms. And so I think this is a really good example in terms of massing approach and techniques to mitigate and to mediate between the two building heights. Similarly, the four-story element beyond, a three-story element in front, with the distance, the height difference between four stories and three stories, it's all a matter of perspective. And so keeping the mass in the middle of the building and away from the corners, I think is a pretty successful strategy. Okay, so we'll go look at Buildings Two and Three. We'll just go down, down the row here. Let's see where's Building Two and Three. So with this simulation, Buildings Two and Three are three stories throughout. So there's not as much stepping up and down, but otherwise has a similar treatment and planting. Again, this is the open courtyard, so this is about a sixty-eight-foot setback here, and then back to like a twenty, twenty-five-foot setback here for Building Two. This is the courtyard between Buildings Two and Three here. Fountain and another building entry element. And Building Three now is all three stories as well. This is the entrance, driveway entrances for Buildings Three and Four. So we'll look at Building Four quickly. So Building Four is the other building that has some four-story element. But even on this building, on both ends, we're stepping down to three stories. So we get this terrace and height effect. I think it's, again, is a good strategy for mediating between three stories and four stories, create some visual interest, keeping the four stories towards the middle of the building. And then as we approach Holly, we're going to step back down to three stories again. So that's Building Four. Building Five and Six. So for Building Five and Six, Building Five is three stories facing Holly, and then steps up to Four. And as we get beyond, Building Six is entirely three stories for this simulation. Existing redwoods would remain, similar planting strategies as we have on the project further north. And deeply setback courtyards that open to the street. I'll pause this here. The other change that we have in this simulation is that Buildings Five and Six are separated now. So there's no, there used to be walkways connecting these buildings, and part of Building Six was at four stories. So in addition to Building Six being brought down to three- So in addition to Building 6 being brought down to three stories, there's no longer a visual connection between the two, they're truly separated. So now we have two building lobbies for each of these buildings and a real openness between the two buildings that wasn't there previously. Building 8. This last will be showing Building 8. Before we get too far down here, again, this is the one-story terrace that wraps around behind the two-and-a-half-story element here. The third-story element is stepped back, and so this is the three-story element. Again, because of the distance, I think the perception of it is that it's not as tall Broken down the mass of the third story here, essentially breaking it into two building masses with a loggia between the two. And at the south end, stepping down again to a two-story element and a one-story element. And then from Building 8 from Old County, again, just because I know that this was a question about the height of Building 8, so we'll show Building 8 from Old County Road. This is the existing berm planting that would also remain. These are the poplars that are there. There's redwoods existing on the other side that would also remain. And so this is Building 8 from Old County. So this is the three-story portion here. There's a similar loggia. This is actually the exact... It's a mirror image of the facade that faces El Camino with the two sort of tower pieces with the loggia connecting between the two. We're going back and down Montgomery now to get a better perspective on it, but this is essentially what you would see from the Old County roadside.
There's actually a poplar in the wood there. Hey, look, that's...
I have my notes here. Yeah, it was easier when it was all in one presentation, so... Yeah. Now that's a lot of PowerPoint. And so I was just gonna talk a little bit more about the building massing. I know there's been a request to step down Building 5 and also Building 4 at the corners. So I just wanna look just really quickly at kind of how we've approached that so far. Building 5 already facing Holly Street is at three stories, so that's a step down to three stories there. Then as we step into the courtyard and around towards Building 6, there's a lot of stepping in the building, stair stepping, which opens at the top level and I think breaks down the massing of the fourth floor in this area. Also, just to keep in mind that the circulation for this building, because we have to have two lobbies now as the buildings are separated, we do have an elevator and a stair tower on the south side of Building 5. And so if we eliminate... We all have to be careful how we sculpt these corners if we bring them down any further because those elements would remain tall to serve the fourth floor. But what that looks like here is stepping back, create some visual interest. We have a lot of shadowing, a little bit more openness at the corner. So this is the third story of Building 6, stepping up to the four stories of Building 5. And so I think because these buildings are related, I think there already is sort of a natural progression of height here. This is another strategy at the courtyard of Building 5, where we have a corner deck that's stepped down. Again, the roof is pulled back, so the four-story element is pulled back at the corners to help soften the corners. This is a three-story element at Holly, so that relates, I think, nicely to this deck element. So there's a lot of strategies that we can do to soften the four-story elements that do remain in these buildings. This is something we could work with planning staff on further if there's any further concern, but we have a sort of a kit of strategies that we can address building height with if it's still a concern.
It's 20 minutes. Do you have a lot more?
No, actually, we're just about done here. Actually, I think that actually is it. I think we've made it to the end, unless there's any further questions.
I'm sure there's gonna be questions.
Yeah, because we can pause or go back to these videos as you have questions as well.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. We've got a lot of speaker cards, but I'm gonna go for questions for another half an hour, if we even have that many questions. I don't know if people do. So I think you had one in, so you got two more.
No, actually, I think I had two in, and I'm happy to pass them upon.
Okay, Mr. Grokot, a couple of three questions.
I did have... You've answered one of them regarding the entitlement process and what are we... The question I had asked last time was why are we looking at a... What are the aspects of the project that are requiring us to look at a planned unit development? And you had mentioned one of them was length. And so Mr. Olber asked that question, and it came up that the buildings would be limited to 125 feet if it weren't... If it was under the mixed-use station designation?
No. Again, there would have to be a finding and a conditional use permit granted to exceed the 125 feet.
Right.
But the criteria would be, is there sufficient detailing and articulation? So the 125-foot, if we didn't do a planned development, there would still be an opportunity for the buildings to be approved in the length that they're presented, provided the findings can be made.
Sure. But otherwise, it's 125 feet. So then my follow-up question to that is, you've got the 125 feet, what about distance between buildings? So if you had, you know, say you had six buildings that are 125 feet, how much distance under mixed-use station is required between those buildings?
I don't recall that there is a building separation requirement from the zoning perspective. There would be a separation from a building code perspective, particularly because there's openings on building to building. And I'm not sure for... We are fortunate enough to have the building official here whether... So I don't know that there's a requirement from the zoning perspective, only from the building code perspective in terms of how far they have to be set apart. If there were lot lines drawn, then there are setbacks of a minimum of 10 feet from the lot lines. But if there was no lot lines, there wouldn't be a requirement for setback between the buildings.
So can somebody answer my question? Because I'm not really getting an answer.
There is not a requirement under the MUSA that requires a separation, a minimum separation between buildings.
But there must be some separation between the buildings based on something.
There are. If I could add to that, in fact, we do have those numbers, and I can kind of go through those numbers.
Is that required?
Oh, required setbacks? Or just the difference, what's there now?
Well, the way I look at it is this. I always... I'm sorry if I always do this, but, you know, I do certain thing for my day job. And for example, if I'm gonna put a single-family home and then a garage, detached garage on the site, I have to have 10 feet separation in most cities between the garage, you know, the detached garage and the house. It's... And it is, in most communities, that's a, as I understand, it's a planning requirement. It may be building as well. But it's a requirement either way you look at it. So my question is, if you're gonna take one of these sites and put, say, six buildings of 125 feet length on the site, how much separation would you have to have between those 125-foot buildings?
And we have... We do have the building official, and I guess the building official can answer this question, but we also have the specific numbers as well. So Chris, maybe you could address that question, if there's some fire separation or uniform building code separation requirements.
To answer your question, the code allows buildings to be... It's broken down into, you know, 0, 5, 5, 10, 10, 15, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And what comes into play is how a structure is built in the, say, the 0 to 5 or 0 to 3 range. Pretty much zero penetrations along that wall, one-hour, two-hour, whatever-rated wall. Then you get into the larger distances, and you're allowed a certain percentage of penetration, i.e. fenestration windows, et cetera, based upon the distance that the buildings are set apart, be it from a building, property line, whatnot. That's really the easiest way to answer that question to you, is that the code allows things to be built like this. But depending upon how many... How much penetration you have in that wall, you can start separating... Or it then requires the separation to be greater.
Okay. I have no idea what you're even talking about, so that's...
I'm just talking code, that's all.
That's just crazy.
Well, what he's saying is, for instance, if you go to 1,001 El Camino on the south side, there's no windows at all, and they built...
Right up to the property line.
About six inches between that and the little building next door. So what he's saying is then if you start adding openings...
Right.
Like we have, I mean, I suppose we could look at these buildings and say, okay, if we were gonna design these kind of buildings with these kind of openings and have separation between them, and that's what I'm getting at, how much separation would we expect if we're gonna have residential buildings like are being shown on these plans with openings on the north and south ends of these buildings? What are we talking about? How much separation?
Okay, well, from what I've... My preliminary review of the plans as they're drawn, the, you know, the separation, I believe the fire marshal has looked at it as well, the separation of the buildings with regard to the openings is compliant.
Okay.
So that's... It really wasn't a red light item that popped up when we were doing our pre-review of the plans. So that's, again, my best way, I think, to answer that question for you.
And if I can add something to that, through the mayor, the closest separation, or the narrowest separation is between Buildings 1 and 2, and it would be about 57 feet, 8 inches between the two buildings.
Excuse me, I thought the distance between Buildings 5 and 6 is the closest, is it not?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. That's 45 feet, 10 inches. You're correct.
Actually, that... On that particular building, it looks like 45 feet when you look at the site plan real quick, but if you really hone in on it, it's about 35 feet between stairwells and so forth. But, okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Clapper, questions?
None of my questions have to do with the presentations we've just seen.
Okay. Ms. Collins?
My questions were answered.
Okay. The only question I have is, people keep talking about three stories, four stories, and I don't know, the school I went to, it's ballpark 14 feet for a story. So I'm thinking 42 feet. I mean, you may be able to know this better than I, but I always thought 14 feet was the ballpark of a story.
No.
No?
Not with... That's the thing, is because it's... You might be right on south of Holly.
Okay. Well, then I'll ask the question, Mrs. Seve. I hear three stories, four stories. What are we talking about?
The architect is available.
It depends. Don't tell me that.
Could be. It does depend.
Oh, no. That's not good. I don't like that. Because what... Then it'd be just like we knocked the fourth story or the third story with differences.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm sorry. Could you just answer the question?
Sorry?
What's the difference? What's a story?
Well, in this case...
It depends?
Well, for clear height in an office space would be 12 to 14 feet.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Clear space, if you're talking about floor.
No, no, I'm just talking about you build a building. How many feet is a story?
In a residential building, it would be...
In these buildings? The residential ones?
Residential building is 10 feet, and...
10 feet? So it's 30... That's all it is, is 30 feet for a three-story building?
Plus, there's podium that's above grade, so the garage is about, varies from 2 feet to 5 feet above grade.
Okay.
And then the roof's forms are also included in that height, so you have to consider that as well.
What's the roof?
Roof is 8 feet tall in some cases.
Some, so it depends.
It depends. And then we try to keep some variation because we don't want it all to be just...
Oh, I understand from an architectural standpoint. Don't get me wrong. You have a...
But that's where the total height comes from.
You wanna do style.
Sure.
We wanna do mass and size, okay?
Sure.
That's the difference.
Well, we'd like to do both.
I understand. But that's what I'm trying to get at, when you say we're gonna, you know, a three-story building or a four-story building, as you just indicated, it depends. Okay, all right. That's fine. Thank you. That's the only question I had, Mr. Olber.
My remaining questions are also from some of the staff reports, but they were not part of the presentations, Mr. Mayor, so I think, like Ms. Collins, I mean, Ms. Clapper. Excuse me. I'll wait.
Ms. Grokot?
I'm in the same boat.
Okay, all right. All right, well, then we've got a number... Do I have more cards? Speaker cards? We've got a large amount of speaker cards. Probably 30 or 40, as I'm getting here. So... Oh, yeah. Okeydoke. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna do two minutes tonight instead of three, and I'll let you know when it's two minutes, and hopefully you can wrap up in the next 15 or 20 seconds. And I'm just taking these cards as they were handed to me. So the first one I have is Marilyn Brewer, followed by Rita Fizaro. Is Ms. Brewer here? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Brewer. I've been here five years in San Carlos, and I like this town very much. And I like the... I do like this project very much, and I like having it on El Camino Real because I would... We have a population coming that's gonna increase, and we have to be ready for it. This is part of our plans, and I'd rather see it on El Camino than in our neighborhoods. El Camino is the right spot for it.
Okay, folks, okay. If you remember last time, this isn't a game, this isn't a football game, it isn't a comedy club. People are gonna say things you're gonna disagree with, okay? People are gonna say things you agree with. So be respectful of everybody's opinion. I really appreciate it, okay? Including the DAS. Thank you very much. Go ahead, ma'am.
My only other comment is, there are a lot of young people that would love to live in an apartment by the railroad. And so I'm a little disappointed, at least at this point, that there are no BMR rental units in this project, because that would be nice to have the young people here as well as the older people here in that spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Okay, next speaker is Rita Fizaro, followed by Virginia Renda.
So I have... Hello, everybody. I have just a few things. I'll try and run through them real quickly. So just in terms of the sample of work, the presentation that showed the comparison of this Pueblo Hacienda to this current proposal, I don't find that an apples-to-apples comparison personally. When I look at the front of it on El Camino, it absolutely looks a lot different than the backside along Old County Road. There's... I don't see the character that's instilled in the Haciendo, or whatever the name of that. I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name. But anyways, we'd like to see something that's really more apples-to-apples. There's no balconies like there in the Hacienda version that they show in those little alcoves that are, you know, that Spanish Tudor style. That's not present. So from Old County Road, in my observation, it just looks like a sheet of wall. Actually, wall's a pretty applicable description of what's going up there, but a wall with some just flat windows on it. So that's the vision that I see there. Secondly, I'd like to propose absolutely no four stories, and I don't think there's a place for them there, and I'd love to see it just go to two stories. And if you wanna play around with three stories on the very south end and not impede on the people that live on the east side, more on the north end of the development, I think that would be a nice consideration. And I would ask you, just ask yourself, would you wanna live across the street from a four-story building or a three-story building? And I don't care how many trees are in front of it. Nothing can replace the backdrop that we already presently have. I think that's half the reason people moved to San Carlos. And then in terms of parking spaces per unit, people do have visitors, so I'm not sure if you've just accounted for a... If there's just accounting for a parking space per unit. I know...
Could you wrap it up? I'm sorry.
Okay, so just... We should have more. There should be an abundance of parking because people have visitors. And then on the story height, I did a lot of research on that before I came, and it looks like it could be anywhere from 9 to 15 feet because depending on what you have in between the stories for HVAC and what... you have in between the stories for HVAC and whatever other electronics you could have, it could vary. So you're right, there are, there is an absolute answer.
Okay.
And a peak being eight to ten feet, it's almost like a story.
Ma'am, are you just about done? I'm sorry. Okay, thanks. Sorry, but there's just lots and lots of people here who want to speak. Virginia Renda, followed by Jean Walsh, or Jen Walsh. If you could queue up, that would really help, too.
Hello, that's Virginia Rousch.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I can't read very well. Apologize.
I would like to see that we defer any decisions until after story polls are put up, so we can visually see the sizes and mass of the project, and before any vote on the project takes place. That's all.
Those your comments, ma'am?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Jen Walsh, followed by Vera Harrington?
Hello, thank you, I'm Jennifer Walsh, and I would like to ask that we wait to make any real decisions until the new council is seated. Thank you. That was all.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Harrington? Is she here? Yes, okay. Followed by Yvonne McClure.
Councilmembers, Mayor, good evening, my name is Vera Harrington. I am a taxpayer and a voter, and I'm very pleased to be able to speak my mind in front of you tonight. I, too, would ask that the voting be deferred until the December council is in place. I would also like to say that, and agree with the first woman who spoke, that four stories should be scaled back to no more than three, maybe less than three stories. And also that the story polls would be very helpful in communicating to all of the citizenry in this community the size and the mass of this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yvonne McClure, followed by Suzanne Stevens?
Good evening, Yvonne McClure, I'm speaking as this private citizen of San Carlos for fifty-five years. I recommend that the city council accept the ordinance prepared by the Planning Commission with the changes noted in the city's supplemental staff report dated November 12, 2013, omitting alternate A and alternate B. Please note that I would add, with the added proviso, that affordable housing be included at a rate of fifteen percent of the units, except that this is to be reviewed separately in the waiver issued under Agenda Item 11. The above would more closely follow the city's general plan, which created zoning for more density, mixed use, and higher height limits at the transit-oriented locations in our city. This general plan was created after years of work by representatives from all areas of our city and reflects the best interests of our city. It also reflects the uses recommended by the Grand Boulevard Initiative for the El Camino Real. I applaud the work done by the staff to include conditions for more articulation, better design, as well as quality of materials. I trust that you will consider the benefits that this project could bring to San Carlos. And as an additional note, I would appreciate your considering approaching the Parks Commission for ideas for the skateboard park or dog park before a landscaping plan is made for the southern property along the El Camino Real. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Suzanne Stevens, followed by Dick Cezarman? Cezarman?
Yes, Mayor Grisilli and members of the council, my name is Suzanne Stevens, and I brought my home in San Carlos twenty-one years ago. And during the time I've been here, I have often thought, and wondered, why nothing was being done to make the east side of the El Camino Real attractive, useful to our citizens, and productive of income for the city. It's that land, and I consider it, from Taco Bell to Britain, actually, although I know this project doesn't take in all of that. But it's an area that, when people are coming into our city, it's their first impression as they come to downtown San Carlos. And I think it's a shame that it looks the way it does, and other than our beloved train station, there's not very much to like. I like what I see about the Transit Village project. I think it's well-designed, it's been thoroughly discussed, but then it's going to still be thoroughly discussed, I'm sure, and details debated. But at the risk of sounding like I'm against Christmas and Halloween, it at least gets us away from Christmas tree lots and pumpkin patches, okay? So anyway, I also like the fact that the emphasis of the project is on housing, and secondarily, on retail. If we look at some of our other cities and their train station areas, we know Palo Alto, Menlo Park, Redwood City, and even San Carlos, the train station commuters certainly fuel the retail, the shops, the restaurants, and so forth in the area surrounding the train station. I like the fact that we would have housing, a significant amount of housing, so that people who want to commute to their work, and then they want to come home and walk to shops and restaurants and so forth, would be able to do that.
Ma'am, you want to wrap it up, please?
Okay. If I were a little younger, I'd be the first in line for an apartment at the project. Anyway, what I want to do is urge you to allow this project to get started soon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Dick Cezarman, I apologize if I blew that name, followed by David Crabb.
Did fine. Honorable mayor, council chamber members, council members, my name is Dick Cezarman, I live at 1138 Royal Lane in San Carlos, near Cresview in Britain. I'm a retired firefighter, I spent thirty-five years with the Meadow Park Fire Department, and retired as the Assistant Fire Chief. I, the last time I addressed the city council was in support of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation proposal to build a state-of-the-art care and health center. We are pleased to see the progress with this construction and look forward to its opening in 2014. This evening, I'm here to offer my support for another worthy project planned for the railroad property running along El Camino. When my wife, Donna, and I chose to retire in San Carlos twenty years ago, we did so because the community has so much to offer. While we live in the hills, which would not necessarily be a choice of location for many of our peers, it fortunately still works for us. San Carlos is an inclusive community, such as a highly affluent Atherton and Woodside, where apartment buildings are not allowed. But this particular community is inclusive, that continues to provide choices for individuals who are not financially able to, ready to commit to purchasing a single-family home in this market. I am reminded that all of us were renters at one time, so it's important that San Carlos remains inclusive. That said, we also recognize that there is a little supply of land in which to build high-quality apartment communities, such as the one planned by legacy partners of Foster City. The railroad property stands out as an ideal location for easy access to Caltrain, bus service, along El Camino, and a hop and a skip and a jump to the downtown area. Young people are drawn to San Carlos, and we like the energy they bring, and they boost in the business that comes with more foot traffic in and around the lively downtown business district. I would also point out, with the large number of new employees that are expected to staff the Palo Alto Medical Foundation...
Mr. Cezar, if you could wrap it up?
Okay, on the property. I would suggest that maintaining status quo does not seem like a reasonable option for the railroad property. In fact, the land today is more of a blight on the landscape than anything else, so I especially, I would like to see us move forward with this project in a light that has been projected by the legacy partners.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Mr. Bouchard, followed by Nancy, I believe it's Zeebergs?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Grisilli, and members of the city council, Dave Bouchard, Chief Executive Officer of the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here this evening on behalf of the Chamber of Board of Directors, and we encourage your approval of the San Carlos Transit Village. We believe the Transit Village has great potential to add value to downtown businesses, and that it's the appropriate time for you to approve this project for the following reasons. The Transit Village is one of the city council's strategic plan objectives to enhance economic development. A component of the city's economic development priorities is to ensure adequate workforce housing. At a recent joint study session of the City Council on Economic Development Advisory Commission, some members of the city council indicated a need for more rental housing in this community. In order to maintain a vibrant community, it's important to provide a balanced housing stock to meet diverse workforce needs and enhance the quality of life of working families and individuals. Many of this community's largest employers, including Kelly Moore Paint Company and the Home Depot, as referred to earlier, say the lack of housing choices in San Carlos and the surrounding area has been an impediment to employee recruitment and retention. And finally, a fiscal impact analysis indicates the Transit Village is expected to generate nearly $7 million in estimated annual retail expenditures that build out for San Carlos businesses. For these reasons, and because I don't believe there's a better informed group of individuals in the city council sitting here before us tonight, and we encourage you to vote on this matter tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Nancy Zeebergs, and followed by Don Eaton?
Good evening, I'm Nancy Zeebergs, I've been a resident in San Carlos for over forty years, and being part of the Greater East San Carlos, I know that our area has been working together in trying to work with the council and the builders that have come in to try and make this project workable for all of us. And I appreciate the attempts that the group is to make the street view attractive and workable for the city of San Carlos, because we are known as the city of good living, and it is going to make it attractive to us. As you drive down El Camino, and you see the buildings that come right straight up against the El Camino, it's just ugly. It doesn't look nice, and it doesn't, it wouldn't represent what we are in San Carlos. I agree with keeping, there are several, just a few points I'd like to make, I do agree with keeping the northbound lanes in El Camino as they are, and just eliminating that part as being a crosswalk, because there is, the other is much easier to cross, and the northbound, the northern part of that intersection. The percent of, keeping the percent limits of the affordable housing should be maintained by the group, or even increased, but definitely not decreased as they are requesting. We need the affordable housing, we need the young people in San Carlos. If it means smaller units, to provide more affordable housing, to make it available to more people, then that would be up to the, up to the company to make that so.
Ms. Zeebergs, I apologize, your time's sort of rounding up, so could you wrap it up?
Okay. I would like to make a comment on the other, the signs, on the digital signs. There would have to be a way, if it goes digital, of dimming those lights at night, because they are so, so, so bright if it is approved to have digital. Driving at night, they almost blind you on some of the digital lights that there are on the signage. I didn't get up and say something earlier, but I'd like that to go into the records. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. R. Don Eaton, followed by Mark Moulton?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I come here before you this evening as a citizen, and I guess with my continued commitment to make San Carlos a better place. I'm probably in a unique position, because I seem to know all of the parties, and I think that's good. They're all pretty good people. I also probably bring some professional expertise, and that the last forty years I've been involved in the finance aspect of a variety of major investment properties. That's what I do for a living, and hopefully some of that expertise will come through in what I say. For example, the costs of equity and the costs of lending, you know, financing, are going up. They've gone up, I mean, like a hundred and thirty basis points just in the last six months or so. We don't know where interest rates are going, nobody does, but that's certainly something to play in, because you don't want to paint a developer into a corner that way. And there's obviously, they just need to be fair to the developer that way, and in the end, the numbers have to work. For example, if you were to lower the number of units, that does not necessarily proportionately lower the cost. You still have to put a roof, you still have to put underground parking, there still has to be common area amenities, and so that proportionality doesn't always apply. To that end, I would encourage you to support this project. No project is perfect that I've seen in forty years, or very few of them, and this one probably isn't, but it's a pretty good representation of what probably should be approved. The site's been vacant way too long, the concept goes back twenty-plus years, from the time we did the grade separation. Architecturally, the project is sound. You can see the renderings, and projects always look better than the renderings. Good examples are the Pacific Hacienda, and a project that I've noted to all of you at one time or another, over on Woodside Road, which has a lot of stone accents to it, it's a good-looking project.
Ms. Eaton?
Yes?
If you could wrap it up?
I will try to do that.
Thank you.
Inclusionary housing, Redwood City and Sunnyvale don't have any. I think we do need some, however, and I think that's only fair. I would counsel you to build community in all that you do, to try to understand that in any good project, as in any good deal, there's pros and cons, and everybody probably walks away wanting something a little bit more. So try to do the best you can, and I know you will. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mark Moulton, followed by David Crabb?
Good evening, Mayor Grisilli and council members, I'm Mark Moulton. I'm coming this evening as the Executive Director of the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County, and I've left information for you about what we do. We are advocates for more housing in the Mid Peninsula, and I actually have been talking about this site with you all for more than ten years. We were here as Habitat for Humanity and asked to look at concepts on the very south end of the site for row condominiums years ago. Tonight, I hope that you'll make the sequin findings and approve the rezoning of the site, because I think you have opportunities. I think you have an opportunity to put residential development at pretty high density, an early easy walk to Main Street, an easy walk to Caltrain, and an easy walk to the Samtrans Bus Stop. I think you have an opportunity to decide to go forward as a council of community leaders tonight, and I urge you to do that. I think you have an opportunity to permit an example of development that transforms land by infill, and it supports Main Street businesses and meets the need for more rental housing in a hot market, and is a mixed-use pedestrian-friendly plaza that's an entry feature on the state highway and all the transit systems. Make San Carlos be a real jewel at the entry in the Mid Peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. David Crabb, followed by Paul Maginetti?
Honorable mayor and members of the council, I'm Dave Crabb. I'm an architect, I work and live in the city of San Carlos, I've lived here for twenty-four years. I'm going to speak to you tonight as an individual, not as a representative of an organization where you've usually seen me, and tonight I'm speaking for myself. I wasn't involved in this at the very beginning, the Transit Village, but to my knowledge, it's been going on at least eight years, they've been working on this project, it's been up to, in front of the cities. During that period of time, there have been many changes to the city council, many changes to the planning commission. We have done a general plan review with twenty, twenty-five citizens who are involved in that general plan review, which rezoned the whole area. A lot of things have happened, and I'd like you to make sure that you put this decision you're going to make tonight in context, that there is a history to this project. And I believe that the Transit Village started off over three hundred units, it got reduced to two hundred and eighty units, it's remained at two hundred and eighty units for the last five or six, seven years, whatever it's been. And I just really don't think that's fair to the developer. I think the developers come a long way with the architecture on this project in relationship to the neighbors. Originally, they kind of stonewalled everybody, and I was pretty pissed off at them myself. But they, I think, have come around, and I think they're really trying to work with the neighbors and work with the city to reduce the scale of this building, visual scale of this building, and I think they're fairly successful at it. So I would strongly support that you pass tonight or approve this project tonight on the basis of the planning commission's recommendation to you. And as far as I know, I think the only major thing in relation to massing that that relates to is they wanted to knock three units off the east side of Building Six, which I agree with, because that reduces the scale of the east side. So that's my ask for you tonight is please approve the project as permitted and do not do alternate A or alternate B. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Maginetti, followed by Donald Bradley.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Paul Maginetti, I live on Springfield Drive. I like history, another history lesson. I'll keep it contemporary. It seems like this train is leaving the station, and if I can quote The Banana Splits, hold the bus. I have here a section of a general planning update from 1992. It includes an element for a Crestview Drive connection to 280 Vista Point interchange. That was never implemented. I can only imagine who opposed that, but apparently the public changed their mind, and that was never implemented. Not every element of the general plan is always implemented. Public perceptions change, and our city government must reflect that. In July of 2008, I came to the city council on a public item, and I spoke out against this, and everybody looked at me like I was a freak. Well, I guess I'm a freak, and there are lots of freaks like me. How many elections are needed for this Transit Village? This last election was ostensibly about the Transit Village. Will the current city council make one last grab for the special interests and nullify an election? Or will they look beyond to the basic interests of an electorate that has chosen a new mix of individuals to act in their interest in the city of good living for one and all? This is still about all of you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Donald Bradley, followed by Dimitri Vandelis.
Mayor, council, staff, and citizens of the city of good living. I've lived in, in San Carlos now for thirty years. In fact, tonight is my thirtieth wedding anniversary, and I should be home with my wife, right? Should be. But I know how these meetings go. I've been a professional planner for over fifty years and a professor for some thirty-five years. I know your, your fine planning director, Al Savay, but I've not discussed this with him. I didn't even know that Colette was working with the city, but I know her from professional board meetings also. I support this project. I think the time has come. You must move ahead. It fits our city. We need, we need more housing and jobs, and I think it's a good project. I was very impressed with the architect and landscape architect's proposal here tonight. I know it's been scaled back, but that's compromise, and that's what politics and planning are all about. I've never come and spoken to the city council here or planning commission about any projects. I've avoided politics in my hometown. I was on the, on, president of the Board of the Homeowners Association up in Britton Heights. I finally had to move away to get away from that job and move, but I wanted to stay in, in San Carlos, so I just moved a mile up the road. I live at thirty, at, at Number Five on Violet Lane, up by Crestview and Club Drive. And I think this is a, is a fine project for the city, and I hope you, I urge you to move ahead and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Dimitri Vandelis, followed by Edward, I'm going to blow this one, Schenger, or Schur, I'm not sure which.
Council members, for many years of effort, we're finally seeing some traction in this project that addresses some of the impacts, the effect, the east side neighborhood and the rest of our city. I recognize that there have been some changes in the heightened density in several of the buildings in Plans A and B, I believe, and applaud city staff and council on making these initial changes. Well, I applaud the, at least the staff for recommending them. Council has yet to deliberate on that. It's a good first step in moving this project forward in collaborative fashion with the community. However, we've got a long way to go. Landscaping and tree guarantees are still necessary to mitigate the building heights that extend above the berm. There are no guarantees the trees will be planted along the berm. These trees are necessary and needed. If they can't be placed on the berm, as Samtrans, Caltrain, internal documents state, there are funds that pays for the increased cost of trees in our neighborhoods and bulbouts along our streets that need to be accounted for. Option B has a proposal to remove landscaping the planning commission recommended for Building Eight. This is not acceptable to the community. We need additional trees on the properties behind, on the property behind Building Eight and all the buildings south of Holly Street. Building heights need to be clearly spelled out, as many council members brought up. A two-story building that's forty-two feet high isn't very much different than a three-story building that's forty-nine feet high. This doesn't address train noise, bounce back that the building will create against a twelve-foot berm, and it doesn't make it reasonable to eliminate those still very necessary trees needed to screen the building. Council asked for story polls at the last meeting. Many people spoke up and asked that those go forward. I feel these need to be placed so the entire community of San Carlos can understand the impacts of this project. Let's understand what we're getting into. We're going to be living with the impacts of this project for ninety-nine years. We need guarantees that all park fees go towards L'Oreala Park to accommodate five hundred new residents, and we need a specific agreement that outlines plans to expand L'Oreala Park. We need to understand traffic. There's been some discussion about that, the permanent early shading of our neighborhood, moving shuttles to the El Camino. We need to resolve trash cleanup, zip cars, other car sharing options. Also, very importantly, we need to understand if Legacy and Samtrans will be paying for the bonds that have been imposed on city residents for school improvements such as sewer lines and other bond members. I'm trying to finish up. There are a few more points here, if you could indulge me. Residents of San Carlos should not have to take on the burden of paying the ongoing costs for infrastructure, police fire, and schools for the new residents in our community. Samtrans and Legacy need to pay their fair share of all taxes, fees, and bonds for the life of the project. Regarding the 3D representations, and I'm getting close to wrapping up.
Could you wrap it up, please?
Council asked for representations without the added landscaping. I saw a lot of mature landscaping that hid the massing of the buildings. The angle of the 3D models showed of the berm weren't a real representation of the berm.
I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask you to stop speaking.
Yeah.
Give you and everybody the same, same amount.
Yeah. Mayor Grisilli, you tend to react a little bit more, you know, harshly to representatives of the community rather than proponents, and I don't appreciate that.
Everyone's entitled to their opinion. Everybody's sure, but apparently, Mr. Moulton, you're going to be speaking for them?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was asked to read this letter from Mr. Edward Schlessinger of San Carlos. It reads, "Regarding the Transit Village Scale Model, 12th of November, 2013. Dear City Council, please commission a scale model of the proposed Transit Village. Please include the surrounding area and the buildings on the west side of El Camino and display this model in a public place such as the San Carlos Library." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker I have is Glenn Gellino, followed by Sam Hertzberg.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I would implore you to recognize that you work for the people of this community, and your tone can be a little bit better. I really want to impress upon the council that I feel personally that you should put this decision off until the next council is seated. There's a purpose and a reason we have elections, and we've spoken to the community as to who we want to represent us, and I implore you to allow that to happen. I've sat here tonight and in many other meetings, and it seems that our city staff and many members of the council seem to want to work in the interest of the developer. Since when does the developer's interest trump those of the citizens of this community? I'd thank you to keep that in consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Sam Hertzberg, followed by Susie McKey.
Good evening, Mayor Grisilli and city council members. This project has been contentious, controversial, in large part due to the height and mass of the structures. As proposed, again, from one end of the project to the other, it's eighty percent building, averaging fifty feet in height, over a hundred and fifty feet in length. It's unlike any other development, similar development on the peninsula. I'd like to advocate for alternative B, which, which helps make this development fit into the community and lessen the impacts on the east side neighborhood. Two hundred and fifty units are more than adequate, especially considering there is no affordable housing proposed as part of this development. Would like to echo, you need to take your time to resolve all the issues on this project. I know there's, there's a rush by some to move forward sooner than later. There's still a few outstanding issues in addition that weren't addressed in the staff report. I'd like to confirm that the shuttles will be moved from Old County Road to El Camino Real. I'd like to confirm that the trees will be placed that won't be in conflict with future electrification, north and south of Holly Street. The permit parking that's proposed needs clarification to make sure that the neighborhood is not paying for that permit parking system in the future, and that's covered by the developer and the property owner, Samtrans Joint Powers Board. Need to confirm that the park in Lou Fees will be confirmed for L'Oreala Park and make, and would appreciate if the city council would, would confirm its interest in acquiring land or making improvements at L'Oreala Park to handle the additional residents proposed. And again, would like to echo that the garbage responsibility around the depot needs to be clarified between the different stakeholders. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hertzberg. Susie McKey, followed by Jerry, I'm going to blow this one, Sarloski, I'm sorry. Ms. McKey?
Hello, city council. So I'm going to say it again. Noise, 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 traffic, 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 high-speed rail. I'm still a proponent of moving south. I will say, I have looked at the other developments, the one in San Mateo, the one in Redwood City. I would definitely move in Redwood City. I would never move to San Carlos because I don't want to be that close to the railroad tracks. Redwood City's set back. It's near the tracks, but it's not on them. It's also, no other development I've seen is set in a major, and I mean major, intersection. That's, that's our intersection. That's it, pretty much, except for Britton. So none of the other ones. They're all set off to the side, on a side street, basically. Some of them are close. San Mateo's close to the railroad tracks. Anyway, the other thing I want to say, it's very interesting and very normal that people who do not live there, there think it's a good idea, and the people who live there do not think it's a good idea. I just want to make that note. The other thing is, of course, everyone wants something there. My God, I mean, it's, it's, it's not at all pretty and never has been. But the question is, what? And because we want something there, it doesn't mean that we want to jump into something that's not the right thing. So I highly advise that you defer your decision till, if we're going to have that poll business, then do it. If we're going to have the scale model, then do that until we have the new council members. Yeah, Palo Alto Medical is going to cause more traffic. As this is being built, the traffic is going to be phenomenal. Also, many of these projects will be finished around the same time, close to the same time. Redwood City's getting there, San Mateo's getting there. So there will be possibly a glut of housing at that point. I don't know those figures. So the other thing is, maybe there should be less parking places since these people are supposed to be using public transportation. I mean, that's what they do in Europe. They don't even have parking places, most places.
Could you wrap it up, please?
Yes, I'm wrapping it up. Thank you very much for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry Drolowski, and I apologize if I blew your name there, followed by Ben Fuller.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Zasloski. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to address the council. San Carlos is a charming, small town. That's what you have going for you here. And if you proceed with this project, that will no longer be the case. You have an inviting community. You have lovely retail. People come from all around to shop here and to be in the atmosphere. And what we were looking at tonight, I can't personally glorify it with the term "architecture." It's a housing project. It's a big, generic-looking mammoth, very symmetrical, square, squat, high, huge housing project. Absolutely out of kilter with everything else in the city. And if you let this go through, that's a permanent blight on the, the whole ambiance of your town. Not only that, but we saw in those pictures, an idealized version, and this is everything brand-new how it's going to look. How do you think it's going to look in ten, fifteen, twenty years? You're going to have a housing project, you're going to have increased crime. It's very hard to maintain those kind of buildings, and I would urge you to postpone any decision on this and do plenty of homework before deciding what goes into that area. And to be fair, not to the developer, but to the people of San Carlos.
Thank you for your comments. Ben Fuller, followed by Katie Gergis.
Ben Fuller, President of GSE. I think we can all agree that we botched the EIR. We know that. We know that they're massive impacts to the project. We also know the shtick, which is that a whole bunch of guys who we haven't seen at all now come here on the day that it's at the city council, know nothing about the project and support it. So thank you, everybody who we haven't seen, because we've been here for years. We also know that high density is way out of vogue right now. Just completely got blown away. Two projects completely dismantled in Palo Alto and San Francisco, and we know the risk. But with that said, I want to acknowledge the developers, Samtrans, the council, and the staff, because we are getting closer to something we can live with, and whether it's decided in this council or the next, we need a trade. So you can't trade Peyton Manning for nothing. That's the deal that's on the table. We'll give you Peyton Manning, and you give us Jack. So here's what we need. We need trees. I, I'd love to see Jeff Burden, all these guys, getting shovels and planting our trees right now, not later. Mark Simon, all these guys, put the trees in. We need a park guarantee from you guys, a declaration that the park is going to happen. How it's going to happen, we may not know yet, but that it's going to happen. And we need shuttles moved yesterday. And finally, we need this alternative B, because alternative B is that red line in the sand that you're not crossing. If we get that, then the line's not crossed. So I'll end by saying, story polls are a great idea. We'd love to find a way to get a better sense of this project, but I get the sense that the train may have left the station. You guys are going to do what you're going to do, but we're like, we're embedded. We're not going away. We're going to be here, and we're going to be watching how this thing is done. So I wish all you guys the best of luck, and let's, let's get a good project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Katie Gergis, I apologize if I missed that name, followed by Marques Lu.
Hi, so I'm Katie Gergis. I've been a resident here in San Carlos for eighteen years. We bought our home about fourteen years ago. Both my children were born at Sequoia, and I've been watching the project since I met with people at hot harvest nights and at wine, at the wine festival. So it's, it's been in the community for a long time. So I came out tonight, and I've been here a long time, because I wanted to just take a minute to tell you and urge you to go ahead and vote on the project tonight. I mentioned my children, and I would like, after they go away to college, that they have a place to come back to. Not their bedrooms, but someplace close by, and I'd like to see some diversity in San Carlos. When we first came here eighteen years ago, if you've been here, you know, the town was very quiet. It didn't nearly have the life and the vibrancy that it has today, and I see this project as a step forward. When we first came here eighteen years ago, if you've been here, you know, the town was very quiet. It didn't nearly have the life and the vibrancy that it has today. And I see this project as a step forward in the economic development for San Carlos and in making it a place for the future that we'll have. Thank you very much. Again, please vote on this tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Mark Haisloop, followed by Tim Hilborn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm one of those faces that must be new to this. I've only been here for twenty-nine years, I think. I go back to the days of the grade separation, the last time that the people on the east side pushed a ballot initiative, which was defeated by seventy-two percent of the vote. And I do remember, from my years on the planning commission, that the first time that this land was designated for high-density residential was in the EIR for the grade separation. And it has been in the fabric of the land use policy of this city for well over two decades. I'm not going to go into the density issue. I've spoken to you before on that. I believe that you are wasting a very valuable asset by dumbing down the density to where it is at this time. We need more housing, not less. And in closing, I would like to agree with the last speaker. At the celebration for the grade separation vote, I had my four-year-old daughter with me at the time. She's now twenty-nine and got married in June. And she needs a place to live. My twenty-six-year-old son needs a place to live. And I think as we all get older, we may need places that are a little smaller than our single-family homes right now. So this project is well in the interests of everybody in San Carlos. I would urge you, finally, to bring this to a vote, move this thing forward. I believe it's, you need to show the Congress of the United States that you can compromise and get off square one and get this thing accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Tim Hilborn, followed by Julia Zier, or Zer.
Before I start, I'd just like to correct the last two speakers. If you want your kids to move to this development, they better be prepared to pay twenty-five-hundred to thirty-five-hundred dollars a month for these apartments. Tim Hilborn, 1052 Sylvan Drive, City Council. I'm asking that you consider the following conditions of approval. First of all, height limits of thirty-six feet maximum on buildings one, two, three, and eight. Please break up the buildings with a minimum of thirty to seventy percent ratio of open space, so it's more in character of this town, so it has view corridors. All noise mitigations from the EIR that have been proposed are not feasible to use at this point. So the buildings do need to be broken up. Set up story poles or cranes. Please do that. You've gotten a lot of recommendations to do that. Reduction in units to at least two-hundred-and-forty-five. The city is pushing to implement over a hundred-and-thirty percent of A-BAG mandated housing for San Carlos through 2022 on the small parcel. There's going to be plenty more opportunity, including Wheeler Plaza. Fully fund the parking program of free stickers, placards for ninety-nine years, up to four cars per household. Please confirm for each tree location, showing exact location of utilities, and a definite placement of where trees will be allowed on the berm in relation to Caltrain electrification before this is approved. No removal of planning commission mitigations or recommendations, including shuttles, truck supply load-ins, and so on. More trees south of Holly. Expand park money and city commitment to L'Oriola Park expansion. Please do a finalized traffic improvement mitigation study and plan for both San Carlos- Transit Village development and cumulative impacts in place prior to groundbreaking. Also, the city council needs to request what amount legacy will be paying to Sam Trans through the land lease of this development, even though the amount of units and square footage has not been officially determined. An estimate based on the proposed development can give us a ballpark figure. Both the city and its residents deserve to know at least an estimated amount, as there will not be any property tax paid to the county or city from this development. The city needs to make sure that there is no sweetheart deal that will allow the developer to go into a below-market lease amount against standard market capitalization rates. The developer also needs to pay fair BMR fees or the fifteen percent mandated BMR units. We're requesting that the city council suspend any voting on this decision until the newly-elected council is sworn in. There are still many components of this proposal to examine, and we must take the time to get it right. In light of the election results and the voters' wishes, it would be remiss of this council to let the council's vote move forward until we have the new city council in place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hilborn. Julia Zier, or Zer, sorry.
So hello, my name is Julia Zier. I live on McQ Avenue. I support transit-oriented development. However, I am very concerned with the size of this project and how it scales with the rest of the city. I commend city staff for presenting the alternatives, and of those proposed, I do recommend that the council support alternative B. That said, the traffic considerations for a project of this size are very real, and what I have not heard today is whether or not the alternative B would be sufficient to mitigate the traffic issues that we're facing with this project. Also tonight, I'm very much in favor of reducing the pedestrian crossing distance at Holly and El Camino Real. This project is going to increase the number of pedestrians significantly, crossing all of the entire area, and we need as many improvements as possible. Parking considerations and pressures in the residential neighborhoods are very real for the retail usage and for the train usage. At previous meetings, Sam Trans has said that their lots are generally half-full, but this does not include the people who are currently using the residential areas for parking as commuters. As a resident living very close to retail buildings, I'm very concerned about the plans for the permit parking, the deliveries and loading zones, the garbage collection, and the shuttles. And I really, I would hope that city council fully deliberate these issues. I have not heard much about the long-term planning for high-speed rail and electrification, how this project merges with that. And I would like to reiterate the concern that the building faces on Old County Road are very uniform and flat. And I think this is very good to protect against Viking attacks from the Bay, but not very good for the beautiful atriums that we've seen from El Camino Real on the other side. And then finally, the addition of this many units will increase usage of L'Oriola Park, and I'd like to see continued improvements to the park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I'm sorry?
But I'm not sure.
I'm sorry?
I know you're supposed to fill out a form.
That's all right. You can come up and speak and fill out the form later. That's fine. Don't worry about it. Someone will show you. It's just a matter for the record, not for us, so we have the record. Sorry, Matt, I didn't see it.
My name is Brenda Bezidi, and I live at Cherry Street. I've come to, I am very concerned about the traffic. We haven't had the medical center open up yet. And because I live near that intersection down there, I know how much more traffic is going to be there. When I think about how much more living area, living space is going to be accommodated right near the Holly and El Camino, there's only a two-lane street that brings into that. You all know that. And when it backs up down by the 101 intersection in El Camino, it's going to end up, I drove by, every day when I drive by Woodside Road, you see how it backs up, just trying to get into going up Woodside Road. And I can't help but believe, that's a huge intersection right there at Woodside Road and Middlefield, and ours is so much smaller. The other thing that nobody addresses is, I happen to be a middle school teacher, and San Carlos already is planning to put fourth graders into their middle school because you have not enough schools, not enough space to put schools. And as you keep increasing the amount of residents here, what are you going to be doing? I mean, really think about that. Do you want your fourth graders in a middle school? I wouldn't, and my grandchildren are growing up near this area. So I think those things, the traffic, and what are you doing with your schools, are things that you also need to really, really consider. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other speakers?
One more.
Just, ma'am, if you could fill out the form, that'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Sure. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Brian Schumaker. I live on 1011 Newton Drive. I would really like to have a decision made for this sometime in December, when we have new elected officials brought onto the council. And I've followed this for quite a while. I've been here twenty-five years. And there's been no discussion, as what the city was talking about, the traffic on Holly Street. There's really nothing you can do about improving that, because you'd have to widen where the train comes through. If you do that, then you take out part of the buildings that you're planning on putting in. So there's no resources for additional resources from the developer for schools. We lost our fire department. Now it's San Mateo, so there's no resources for fire department, police department, additional taxes that these people, and resources we've taken up San Carlos, and it's not going to be the Town of Good Living Archive like it. So I ask you to, a free decision until some of these things have been thought through. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers? Seeing none, or nobody else sees any? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close a public hearing.
Sure, second.
Second.
Okay, moved in second to the close of public hearing. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
We're going to take a five-minute recess.[1266.71]
Yes.
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Thank you. Chair.
There are additional design criteria that are included in the conditions of approval. So if you're looking to say, this is cast in stone, this is exactly what I'm approving today, and I know exactly how big it's going to be, and exactly how it's going to look, and everything, we're not going to really get to that until we go through design review.
Okay, so I'm looking at this booklet that you refer to, and this, you know, for instance, these drawings, based on these changes, the two don't agree.
Correct.
And what I'm afraid of, quite frankly, I'm just going to be real honest, I know I'm getting away from asking you a question, now I'm making a declarative statement, but, you know, we went through this process with 1001 El Camino. We went through this process with the hacienda. Now, the hacienda came out, I would think, even though I was opposed to it at the time, it came out as a good project. 1001 El Camino, in my book, is a disaster. And it actually never came to council.
That's right.
It went to the planning commission, and that's as far as it got. I don't want to do that again. And somebody said something about 99 years. That's very correct. Whatever we approve, so that's why I'm looking for something that's not this scale, is more like this scale, or even larger, that I can look at, because what you talked about is the mass, and the size, and the scope, and there are things in here, like I said, that are incongruous, and I have, I really have trouble with it. Maybe I'm holding my, the standard too close to what I know I have to do when I do my residential projects, but, you know, why the heck not? I mean, my clients are paying $350,000 for, you know, a remodel to their house, these guys are laying down millions. And so one would think, based on that, the scale of economy, and the scale of the project, would mean that the bar you have to jump over is a little higher, or things are a little more focused. So I'm struggling with that.
If I may jump in here real quick, since we're talking about process, the process in what you're being asked to do tonight is considering the zoning. And it's really the conceptual plan of this project as it relates to the zoning. All the necessary process that needs to happen before this project could actually be built still need to continue. All the design work has to be finalized, has to be run through the design review process, planning commission, and the council certainly can give direction to call that up to the council, so that they can sign off on the final design. But that's not something that would happen at this stage of the process, that's the next stage. You know, there are multiple layers to these processes, and you can talk about the hoops that you need to jump through for a project of this scale, which include the EIR work, the zoning work, and then the design work. And so that's really how the process is set up, to fully vet these projects, and if the council has a desire to see the design phase come back to it in the future, there wouldn't be any problem bringing that to you.
All right. So then, that said, relative to one of the speakers, I think it was Mr. Hillborn, talked about percentage of openness, if you will. And one of the things that I looked at, I made a lot of notes about, and I wish there were more of these, these sections right here, okay? And what I, just so the council can see that a little bit, this sheet that has the sections through different buildings. And what I was looking at, in part, was the percentage of site reduction, based on what was done with the berm. When the berm was put in, you lost a certain amount of sightline into the western hills. When these buildings go in place, you're going to lose another percentage, a greater percentage, in some cases, 175% site reduction from what you lost when the berm was put in. So what I'm, one of the things that I'm thinking, and I would like to discuss this with the council later, you guys tell me if this is something that we could do, where you say, this whole project, from one end to the other, no more than a certain amount of site reduction can be lost, either through the horizontal, or the vertical aperture, or you can also consider the horizontal aperture, in other words, the distance between buildings. So that, we give some confirmation to the Eastside community that, yeah, these buildings are going to go in place, but you're only going to lose a certain percentage of the view that you have now. Can we do that?
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Excuse me, one second. I need a motion to extend the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move we extend the meeting until 11:00. Can I do that?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, in response to your question, Councilmember Growcott, you could condition, you could create such a condition like that, I think we'd, you know, you'd probably need to dot the i's and cross the t's in terms of defining exactly what you're doing there. But, yeah, that type of condition, a condition of just as, you know, sort of an arbitrary height number that gets thrown out is, you know, also something that you could do. It's within your discretion as part of this, keeping in mind that this...
If I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, but as I would see that, I understand what you're saying about height and this loss of view combined, that's a little bit like dealing in the single-family world with daylight planes and height limits. They both apply, you have to deal with both of them.
Right. And the question that springs to mind when you raise that issue, to me, is where are you measuring from? You know, what is the point that you're standing, where you're reviewing, you know, those types of issues. But, you know, those types of things, and, you know, these conditions, and there are many of them before you, this evening, as part of this plan development concept, the plan development is really a tool that the city wants to utilize to try to accomplish a lot of the project mitigations that have been worked on and developed with the residents in the community throughout the many years that this project has been reviewed. So that's actually a tool to accomplish a lot of these things, as opposed to saying, we're not going to do that, well, maybe the buildings aren't as linear and long, but then ultimately, they're going to be proposed to be taller, up to the height limits. So, I mean, there is zoning that applies to this existing property, and the plan development is a tool that we're using to mitigate the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Collins, questions? Mr. Olbert?
Yeah, I think I know the answer to this one, but in talking to some folks from various parts of town, I was getting some confused messages back, so I just would like staff to briefly walk me through the current form and thinking of the residential permit parking program. That's contained in the proposal.
So the idea is that there would be seed money provided by the developer, I believe it's $10,000, and that would pay for the administrative costs to set the system up, to, and it would be essentially putting an ordinance in place, so that the city would have the ability to apply a park, a permit parking system in some part of town. Then the idea is that if a neighborhood wanted the permit parking, then they would need to vote, and there would need to be a 50% plus one vote in that neighborhood to say, yes, we do want to apply it to our neighborhood. Then it would be a free program to the residents in the neighborhood, and, again, it could be put anywhere in the Greater East San Carlos neighborhood, provided that grouping votes. Now, the details of, you know, how that works block by block, and the details of the administration have not been developed yet, but that's sort of the overview.
And who would pay for the ongoing administrative costs, assuming that it was exercised by one or more neighborhoods?
Well, you know, it would pretty much pay for itself, because, you know, some people would be violating, you know, for instance, if you didn't have a permit and you parked illegally, you would get a ticket. And so, basically, it's the administrative, the cost of it is someone going around and giving the tickets out. And essentially, that's the way we do it all over town. I mean, there could be potentially some other mechanism to pay for the cost of that, but essentially, it ends up paying for itself.
I think my takeaway, I understand that, my takeaway is, assuming that there's a high level of compliance with it, I imagine that the contingent backup funding comes out of the general fund then, right?
It would, more than likely, the direct cost would be rather limited. Once the signing is put in place, it's not going to be replaced very often. The, you know, role of staff and administering, you know, the application process to get permits over time is really going to be minimal. You know, you'll have new, you know, people sell their house, new people move in, they'll need to come in and get their permits, that kind of thing, but should be, should be pretty de minimis, I think, you know, and that's based on, and you've seen some of the data, the parking study data, on where you'd actually suspect that residents might support this type of permit parking. Certainly, I wouldn't expect it to see it throughout the neighborhood, because that, you know, in the entire Eastside neighborhood, because the parking study data doesn't seem to support that.
My next question is, I guess, a process question. Some of the issues that have been brought up, that even have been brought up from the dais in earlier meetings, like relocating shuttles, and issues about garbage cleanup, and committing to do something to improve L'Oriola Park, I take it, unless I miss something, that's not actually part of the entitlements, per se. Those would have to be separate actions that the council took at some point in time, is that correct?
Kind of a mixed bag on, but you're correct. Some of that's really not related directly to the entitlements of this project. There are additional commitments that the city council would like to make. So I think, you know, if, for example, the council was to go through a process of voting on this project tonight, you know, making statements on your expectations, directions to staff, you know, we'll begin to, you know, prepare additional items to come to the council. The biggest, easiest-to-imagine example, I think, is the condition related to L'Oriola Park. If the council wanted to make a commitment that they would budget whatever fee revenue was generated, parking lieu fee revenue was generated from the project for L'Oriola Park, or another Eastside park development, that would be something that we would reflect in our budget moving forward, that we would bring to you, and it would be something that we would begin planning for by reaching out to the community and having a whole public engagement process about, you know, what the options are for doing something like that. So it would be just the first step of many steps to accomplish something very, others will be very simple.
Okay. I have a couple more, but I'll pass.
I do have a couple.
Mr. Collins?
All right. Thank you. So along those lines, again, if we are to vote on this tonight, and we all have all these little issues, like I noticed that moving the shuttles, for example, is not actually in the planning commission recommendations. At what point do we say, you know, we want to move, you know, we want to make sure that the shuttles get moved, and the sooner the better, et cetera? I think my, well, I can't say for sure, but I would like to think that there is a, you know, there would be a general agreement on that.
Well, as you might recall, councilmember, a few weeks ago, the council wanted to start the ball rolling on the shuttles, and has referred that item to the Traffic and Circulation Commission. It's on their November agenda, so it's already working through the process. I understand from conversations with Sam Trans that they're committed to the concept of moving the shuttles, and they're already, you know, beginning some of the preliminary design work.
That's not something that we need to put in.
It's referenced in the document now.
It's a reference, but...
Yeah.
It's referenced in the document itself, that the transit station should be designed to accommodate the shuttles.
Right, exactly.
But I think that it would help to have guidance from the council to city staff, saying that, yes, you want it done, and then we could move forward with the steps that the city manager mentioned.
Would we do that tonight, or would we do that at a subsequent meeting?
You could just add that as a condition.
Okay. And then, and then the, I realize that there were some, it looked to me like there were some trees removed, because, assuming Alternative B were approved, that the trees were not necessary. And so if we wanted to designate something like that, again, we'd put that in. In other words, if we wanted to leave the same amount of trees that were going to be put in, if, when building eight, or assuming building eight was going to be left at three stories?
Yes, if it's, you know, again, it's a recommendation, you can say, no, we don't want to take that out.
Right, okay.
We're making, we're approving it, but this stays in.
All right. So, and then, so that, I got a couple other things, but I assume we do the same thing. Okay. Good to know. Thanks.
Ms. Clapper?
Collins just hit on my question, so I'm...
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you. I'd like staff to walk me through a little bit, make sure I understand, and actually the public understands, to the situation involving the trees, and specifically, what I'm concerned about is the issue of trees whose continued existence might be, after being planted, might be problematic because of electrification, or some other safety-related issue that arises down the road involving Caltrain. I just want to understand how that actually will work, and whether or not we can require as a mitigation that trees be planted elsewhere.
Yeah, there's a condition of project approval recommended that would require that not only that the trees be planted correctly, irrigation provided, but that the trees would be maintained by the developer for a period of 25 years. And there was a good deal of discussion about that at the planning commission level, in terms of, well, how long does it take to, for a tree to be established, and in a healthy growing condition? So we do have a condition in there, it's on page 11, condition 15, and, again, it talks about for a period of 25 years, and this is well beyond, you know, the establishment of, normal establishment of trees and shrubs and things like that.
What I don't understand how that, how that applies to is, I had understood that there's a, general rule is, when you impose a mitigation, it has to be a reasonable mitigation, and forcing somebody to maintain a tree that they deem to be unsafe for various reasons is not a reasonable mitigation, so they would have the ability to remove the tree, which I'm not necessarily disputing, but I'm, what I'm asking is, what follow-on work can we require to basically do something else to mitigate the sightlines, if a tree has to be removed?
Well, I mean, one of the other ideas is to make available funds for tree planting in the neighborhood, not on the berm, not on the Sam Trans property, but in, potentially in people's yards. So if, and that would be up to the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association, and talking to the people there, and certainly staff could coordinate with them. So it'd be identifying those areas where people felt there was an impact, and that they could benefit by having a tree planted in the yard, or in the, even in the streetscape on Old County Road, or any of the other private, or the public streets that go out from, perpendicular from Old County Road. So it could be in any of those locations.
And is that specific type of mitigation proposed in what we have in front of us?
Yes. It's one of the conditions of project approval, that a neighborhood improvement fund be established. And it starts at about $25,000, and that money could be used for either tree planting in the neighborhood, anywhere, it could be, again, in the public area or in private area. Also, one of the other conditions that attaches to that is that we, the planning commission said, you need to plant at least 70 trees in the berm to the developer. However, there was a recognition that with high-speed rail, that may not be possible, not high-speed rail, but electrification, that may not be possible to plant all 70 trees. So the condition also reads that those trees, that the money that would normally go for those trees, would then go into the neighborhood improvement fund. So it would, it would grow that fund.
All right. Next question, somebody, one of the speakers, actually, I think it was the letter that Mr. Malpe had read, raised the issue of creating a scale model of the project, and I was, I have to admit, I hadn't thought of that before, and I just would like staff's perspective, and perhaps you will ask for the developer's perspective as well, as to whether that's a common thing to do, what's involved with that, how long does it take, cost, et cetera?
I mean, it's not uncommon. However, and I think we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting, in terms of how to visualize a development project, and really, the standard now that most, at least the planners want to see, architects, even councils and planning commissions typically is what we saw this evening, where you can move around the project. And so modeling is okay, but it's, again, it's very small. You can, and I'm not sure that you would get any better sense of the scale and mass of this development with a scale model, but I would refer to the developer or the architect to get their perspective on that.
Councilmembers, I think the, from what we've seen, physical models have really fallen by the wayside, as the 3D modeling has, animation has come into play. I think the model, physical model is always seen from the bird's eye perspective, or from the airplane perspective, and I think, in that sense, it doesn't give the same kind of feel that one would actually experience in the project through real time, being on the ground, moving through the neighborhood, in a virtual sense. So we do get requests for specific animations, if there's a specific viewpoint, a specific path, that sort of thing, modeled in a 3D animation. We do get requests like that, and we can certainly accommodate that, but the physical model seems to have a very limited use.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up comment to that, the one thing I thought was, I believe the letter writer had mentioned, which is not being met by the 3D renderings that we saw tonight, not through any fault of the renderings or of the applicant, but it's the ability of people to come in who don't happen to be attending this meeting, to come in and look at it. I don't know if there's a plan to basically put some of those renderings out on the city website, or accessible, so that people, people can look at them and get a sense for things. Obviously, if, for that to actually mean anything, we'd have to, the council would have to decide to postpone making a decision from tonight, just to give the community a chance to sort of digest that. But that's one aspect of the modeling that presenting it up on the screen here doesn't necessarily provide, I think.
Certainly, the information will be, continue to be available on the website, of course, this meeting is also available on the website, so if somebody can click on the meeting and find that section and watch the presentation, we can certainly clip it out, it'll be replayed on Channel 27, and I don't know that, you know, the timing, you know, that's really the purview of the council tonight, in terms of what it wants to do, but there's going to be a lot more decisions made in the public process of this project before it's ever actually built. So I think any of that work, regardless of the decision that's made tonight, would be valuable to the public in the long run, in understanding the project.
I would certainly agree with that, in terms of the public assessing their, let me describe it as a go-no-go perspective on the project. That would only occur if it was digested before we actually make our decision. So that may be something for us to come back to when we talk about the timing of when we're going to make our decision.
Mr. Growcott, any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Any more questions? Well, normally, I would call for a motion, and then we have a discussion on that, but I'm advised by council that we would move to item 11A, is that correct, council?
I think the, what I'm advising you, that you do, is you, before you take a final vote on the ordinance and the resolution of findings, that you pull out, out of order, the resolution for a requestment of adjustment, reduction, waiver, before you make the final decision. So I could make that staff report for you, it's very brief, or we could waive my reciting it again, in light of the time of the evening, but we thought, staff thought, that would be the best way to approach the approval of, or the consideration, excuse me, of the ordinance, that you consider the waiver first.
Okay, let's start over again. I'm sorry. Do you want me to ask for a motion on this item, or do you want me to move to 11A now?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question, Mr. Mayor. I think that's your choice, you could do either.
Okay. Well, then I'll move to 11A now, then, if it's my choice.
Yes.
Okay.
We need another staff report.
So, would you like to give us a short staff report on 11A, please?
I'd be glad to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this item is to allow the council to reconsider the August and September consideration of the request for waiver reduction, or adjustment of the below-market-rate housing requirements. As the council recall that, in the August, your second meeting in August, you tentatively denied the request, and then you made the formal resolution, and approved the formal resolution of denial on the September 9th meeting. Given some of the changes that are under consideration tonight, and in a recent case out of Palo Alto, Sterling Park versus the City of Palo Alto, we thought it important to allow you to reconsider that waiver request, in the light of both the change, the potential change in the project with the reduced densities, and the impact of the Sterling Park decision, that you might want to revisit it. The recommendation of staff is to accept, at this time, because of these changes, in the context of your approval of this project, or not approval of the project, as the case may be, the adjustment and waiver request.
Okay.
And it's, and to be clear, the request that was proposed by Legacy Partners was that, instead of the requirements in the ordinance to pay the fee, the mitigation fee, or the, or to provide the 15% below-market-rate housing, that the request was for a 10% adjustment.
Okay. Questions? I have some.
I do, too.
Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
All right. Do we have the ability to slightly alter this? Alter the motion?
You do have the ability to slightly alter it, if you'd like, or not accept it. I mean, it's a, it's basically an option we're presenting to you tonight.
Well, I realize it's an option, but in looking at it, it just, first of all, I didn't like it in the first place, but it's kind of going back to the same thing, although I realize, and I've said this before, even before I was on the council, you know, we're dealing with political realities here, and what will work and what won't work, but I'm wondering if we could mix that 10% and split it between 5% moderate and 5% low. Are we already pushing the envelope?
Well, I think, this is, because this is a new agenda item, you can, you can hear from the, from Legacy on their views on different proposals that you might have, that's how I would handle that part.
So we could ask them to maybe respond to that?
Yes.
Who'd like to come up?
What was that answer you didn't like? It depends? It depends on which of the projects you approve. You know, if you approve the planning commission's resolution, we could probably make that happen. If you approve A or B, then we're, we're just pressed to, you know, you're taking away from the economic realities of the project, and we would like to have had the 280-unit project, and to provide more, but it's just, it's the economic reality that exists, and I'd like to be able to do more. I mean, that's why we were, you know, we took a lot of heat for coming up here and being proactive, and saying, we want to create a solution back in September, that wasn't everything everybody hoped for and wanted to hear, and we got beat up badly, and, you know, and publicly, you know, abused for doing so. We're trying to do the right thing here, and I think this is the right thing, I think it's best for the city, it will enable us to accommodate, you know, to get these changes that are likely to occur, I'm guessing the kinds of changes that are going to happen, but if, you know, again, it's a chicken and egg between, is it the planning commission, is it A, is it B? The more units we have, the more flexibility we have to do that.
Okay. Good answer. Okay. Good answer. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Olbert?
So could staff just briefly remind me of the specifics of Legacy's proposal?
It's a, the proposal that Legacy put forward that was previously denied was for 10% moderate housing.
But it was it, was it actually building the units?
It was building the units with the 10%.
Okay. The, I think my next question might be for RSG. I'd be interested, I know that, from what you said, you reminded me, the proposal was to actually build the units. I have raised the point before, there is a relationship between the size of the ground lease and Legacy's economics. And it's, it's a perfectly valid economic impact on them. But it seems to me that a relatively minor reduction in the, the ground lease and the total rental compensation, which we've already been told is effectively above market, might very well have a significant, for lack of a better term, present value equivalency in terms of a BMR fee. And I'd be interested in whether RSG has done any work to look at the relationship between those. What if staff has?
Yeah, I don't believe that that work has been analyzed from that perspective. But certainly, you're thinking, I see somebody who has an answer, raising his hand. I mean, certainly, your logic seems correct. Of course, we're not a party to that lease, but, you know, certainly, it makes sense what you're saying.
Other questions? Otherwise, we have some speaker cards. Want to say something else, Mr.?
In my initial response, I didn't clarify that. The overall presumption is we've looked at this issue, and we've had this conversation with, you know, Sam Trans is, to accomplish what we have proposed will require a significant modification to the lease. And we've received a, you know, a, an affirmative nod that we get it and that we understand we have to be part of that. So Sam Trans is part of that equation. Our ability to build this project on these reduced bases and to provide affordable housing is only going to occur with a reduction, you know, probably in the range of, you know, 20 to 30% in the land lease. So we have done that analysis and we've contemplated that. We can't say what it's going to be because it's a part of this chicken and egg thing. We've got to figure out what's there. Then we know how much is there. And it's got to be fair to everyone. And we've tried to be that moderator of knowing how that works. And these, this isn't our only land lease. We have a very sizable land lease where, in LA County with them, that we've just gone through a renegotiation to redevelop and extend that land lease to build 450 units in Marina Del Rey. And, and, you know, we know a fair amount about how this all works and we're doing all the right things, I believe.
Okay. I have three speaker cards. Glenn Gellino, followed by David Crabbe, followed by Yvonne McClure.
Mr. Mayor, would you entertain a motion to extend the meeting to 11:30?
Entertain the motion. Is there a second?
Yes, a second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So four to one passes. Mr. Gellino, go ahead, sir.
I'm, you know, I'm called again just to say that, you know, this, this particular provision for a waiver, again, is looking out for the interest of the developer instead of that of the community. Yeah, I think it bears noting that the RENA numbers designate what percentage of units we need to provide for in this community. And this does not serve or comport with those numbers. I think you all well enough know that we don't have a lot of place to put all this additional housing here in San Carlos. It's going to be required of us from ABAC. So take that into consideration and I don't see why you're going to hold them to a lesser bar than you'd hold other developers in this city.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. David Crabbe, followed by Yvonne McClure. David here? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yes. I'd like to put some numbers to these, these terminologies we're using. I was calculating for one and two-bedroom units, which would probably be two to three people living in those units, depending on the size of the unit. Moderate rents would fall between $2,885 to $3,245. That is not affordable housing. So they're proposing a moderate and it sort of seems like, oh, this is a big deal. We're giving you affordable housing. It's not affordable housing. If the, you follow the city's BMR ordinance, 5% affordable low-income units, they would rent between $1,970 to $2,217. That is low-income units based on the, the average median income in the county times, well, percentages, it's 50% of that, so on. And so we're talking pretty serious numbers here. We're not talking $250 for a unit or what have you. So I really argue strongly that we keep the BMR requirement in there. The other thing is that, you know, we heard earlier that the lease is kind of high on this thing. And I still feel that Sam Trans owes this, this city something in return for the, in return they're getting on their project. And I certainly think that they could make affordable housing work if they worked with the lease in relationship to Legacy. And third, Legacy's kind of threatened to sue us. And I wonder, in fact, I talked to a lawyer. I don't even know if Legacy has the standing to sue us. They don't own the property. They don't even at this point have a lease on the property. They have an option to buy. It would seem to me that the one that has to sue us would be Sam Trans. Is Sam Trans willing to take on the city of San Carlos in a lawsuit? So I strongly recommend that you keep the 15% affordable on the basis. It's in our zoning code, 5%, 10%. And don't fall for this 10% moderate, which is really not giving you anything. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Yvonne McClure, followed by Ben Fuller.
I alluded to this in my prior presentation. I do believe we need to stay with the 15%. And as Mr. Crabbe alluded to it, our basic policy when they started this project was our housing program. And that started with very low, low and moderate. And it's a percentage across the way. Now, when they first started this project, they knew that was in place. And I, I know that the redevelopment funds have gone away and everything. So I know that things have changed. However, we need to look for our low-income people. We need people in town that can work in our stores. And we need teachers. I, all I can say is get the best you can get from them.
Thank you for your comment. Ben Fuller, followed by Tom Hillburn.
Good comments made all the way around. You know, unfortunately, it's a zero-sum game. I wish it weren't. You know, taking part of one gives back to the other and it is a complicated equation. Sam Trans has got to get theirs, Legacy has to get theirs, the neighbor has to get ours, and affordable housing has to get its. And so we want you guys to make the best decision you can. From a morality standpoint, we definitely support the idea that Ron brought up of half-half, maybe half-moderate and half-low. But we just realized you guys are making real-world decisions. It's pragmatic. You got to split the baby, so best of luck.
Any comments, Mr. Hillburn?
Tim Hillburn, Sylvan Chav. Two years ago now, I asked EDAC to create some models as far as the relationship between what Legacy and Sam Trans will, what Legacy is going to be paying in property taxes and their capitalization rates over this 20-year period from, from the FIR. And that was never done. And this is one of the reasons why it needed to be done. Again, in my earlier comments, I asked that Legacy and Sam Trans provides some kind of model showing the land lease and, and what that would be with different variations. If we're talking about the planning commission recommendation, if we're talking about alternative A or alternative B, there are options there. I think Legacy is trying to squirm around this by saying, well, there's nothing written in stone yet, so we can't give you a definite number. Well, they can give us some models. And I know they're not required to give us what the land lease is going to be, but that comes into play here and you guys could ask for that. So I would really appreciate that. Again, I asked for this two years ago, to get these models created so, so we know what the BMR is going to be. And don't give in on this. We really deserve this, no matter what and how many units we have total from this development. Please push for the 15% BMR or the, and Lufiz. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay. So it's up to us.
Comment?
Go ahead.
I actually think that even though my marketing professor many years ago always used to get mad at us when we gave him this answer, I think this, this topic needs more study. For me specifically, I respect the fact that, that the developer is not under any obligation to provide us with, with financial models or the, you know, and neither is, neither is Sam Trans Caltrain. On the other hand, what we're being told is that the fundamental economics of the project are, are binding on this trade-off that we're trying to make. And it seems to me that therefore that brings that whole issue of what are the economics of the project into play. And again, I respect the applicant's right not to have to disclose information that they don't wish to disclose and are not required to. But that doesn't mean we can't have our own people study this and see what's reasonable and what's not. We have one data point from the work that RSG did some months ago that indicates in some scenarios, it's not necessarily unreasonable to have the larger BMR fee. From the work I did, I'm not convinced, I shouldn't say not convinced. I think there may be other scenarios where that would work as well. So I personally think that we ought to take no action on this tonight and basically direct staff to go out and commission whatever outside experts they need to study this thing and find out what's the best deal we can get out of this based on our best guess of what the economics of the project are.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Grokot?
I think I have a question that was brought up by one of the speakers. And by the way, I just wanted to comment that, you know, sometimes we get speakers who come up and they say things that are, I don't know what the term is, rhetorical or whatever. There's not a lot of meat there, not a lot of information necessarily. But these speakers that just got up and spoke, every one of them brought up a point that I thought was something you could really get your teeth into and say, that's important. One of them was brought up by Mr. Gellino about the RENA numbers. And my question is, we're told by, well, now through the One Bay Area Plan, that we have to produce so many housing units. Mr. Gellino brings up this point that it doesn't just say you have to produce so many housing units, but you also have to produce so many housing units under certain categories of income levels. So I'm hearing on the one hand, even the reason we're looking at this is because of a suit in Palo Alto and because these guys might sue us. But what's the state going to do to us? What's, what's going to happen with our RENA numbers if we don't actually produce some low to moderate to very low?
Nothing.
Well, I don't, are you sure about that, Mr. Mayor? Because...
That's what, that's what it is. All the, all the numbers are, the RENA numbers are, basically, are advisements.
Yeah.
It's incentivized.
Correct. But that was under the, that was under the old plan. Now we're under One Bay Area Plan. And One Bay Area Plan ties your production of these housing units to revenues that you will get for trans-
Incentivized.
For transportation projects.
Incentivized. Not any extra money. Because Woodside, Hillsborough and, and Atherton aren't building any units.
And they're being, on the BPAC, they're being squeezed out of any BPAC money, too.
We disagree philosophically on this, so.
No, it's not a philosophical question. It's a fact.
Mr. Mayor?
That for 10, for 10 years at least, they're not going to be able to get the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee monies to do projects on the coast or in Woodside or in Atherton or any of these places.
It's incentivized.
Well, exactly.
Do the project, you get the money. You don't do the project, you don't get the money. No one takes any away. It's not guaranteed if you do it.
Well, your tax money's being taken away.
Well, it's not being taken away.
Mr. Mayor?
It's incentivized.
Well, it's being given to somebody else.
We're getting way off the point, Mr. [inaudible].
I have just one point.
So anyway, I apologize for interrupting, but.
No, it's all right. Can I hear from staff, though?
Go ahead.
I've heard from you. I respect that.
The requirement for meeting the RENA numbers is to adopt a housing element which demonstrates that you have sufficient land appropriately zoned to permit the development of those
units. It doesn't require you to produce those units. As the mayor has indicated, having an adopted housing element in place, one that's been certified by the state, is a criteria for competing for funds, both through MTC-
There you go.
As well as other funds. But again, the issue is not that, again, because municipalities don't produce very much housing. It's produced by the private market. We're not required to ensure the construction. We're simply required to demonstrate that we have appropriate, sufficient sites appropriately zoned to permit the development of housing in all the categories.
May I jump in here, Mr. Grokot? So just a follow-
It's me. Yes, the mayor.
Go ahead.
As a follow-up question to that, if this project is approved with a particular profile of BMR units in it, that's going to take a big chunk of land out of use for building apartments. Okay? So where does the city end up on being able, meeting the criteria of having sufficient land zoned to permit the meeting of the numbers, the meeting of the state guidelines, requirements, whatever they are?
The property's still zoned. So I mean, it's still, it's the zoning that's important. The creation of the units is, you know, obviously what the real world would like to see. But just because the project gets built doesn't change the fact that it's zoned for that type of housing.
So I want to make sure I understand that. Just so in an extreme case, if we told the applicant they could build one apartment there, and somehow the numbers penciled out, we'd still, we'd still be able to say to the state, well, you could build a lot more apartments here.
Right now, the requirements are for zoning and not actual creation. But really, what you're arguing for is the creation of a much bigger project. I mean, because if that's, you know, if, if the goal is to be as competitive as possible for transportation grants, then, you know, forget alternate B, you know, the planning commission recommendation or even forget the planning commission recommendation, the developer recommendation makes you more competitive based on the regional criteria that folks are going to be looking at. We're simply not going to be able to compete with the Redwood Cities and the San Franciscos and the San Mateos of the world who are building, you know, high-rise housing, even in this county now, and certainly in the North County. If, if those are what the regional decision-makers who are awarding these grants are going to be making their criteria on, there's not really a lot we can do other than send our elected officials to represent this community on those boards.
Follow-up question, if I may?
Sure.
I understand your answer to Mr. Olbert's question, but this is a planned unit development, so we're changing the zoning. And isn't, isn't part of that the looking at these numbers as well? Is that part of the zoning, the PUD that we're approving or not? Are they not, they're not linked?
Well, yes and no. I mean, sir, I didn't take the, if we built one house example as literal. But relative to the options that are in front of you, I don't, you know, I mean, I don't see a major difference in your competitiveness for transit grants as you, you know, as you try to comply. Now, I'm not a developer, and I'm not a resident, and I'm not a housing advocate, and I'm not a member of the city council. And it's been said a number of times tonight, you know, what we're trying to do is craft options that are real-world solutions to a diverse range of problems that are created by any project. And no one issue, I mean, you know, we can pick this thing apart based on special interests that have a, have a strong care about this or strong care about- that have a strong care about this or strong care about that, and nobody's going to be happy. You know, we have to, at the staff level, try to look at the totality of these things. It's easy to pick apart any project, you know, even beloved projects like the U Center have their own wards, the library as well, you know, if we want to get down to specific issues.
Okay. So what do we want to do here? Someone want to make a motion, or?
I'm trying to understand why we took this in this order, why we did this before deciding on the other one, because it seems to me the decision about the percentage of housing has to do with what this, affordable housing has to also do with the scope of the planned development would include. So I, Mr. Mayor, I'm curious as to why you...
Mr. City Attorney?
Well, there's a short answer to this. The zone, the other item is a zoning, basically. It's a zoning and a resolution approving the SEQA findings. The waiver request is a standalone request that, under our ordinance, requires it to be considered earlier than you approve the item. So it's, and the, if you approve the waiver request first, you're not binding yourself to approve the ordinance. But the other way around, if you approve the ordinance and then you go to the waiver request, you can't condition the ordinance on a later approval of the waiver request. So it's really the order that our ordinances and our municipal code is, contemplates that you approve it. And secondly, there's an issue of conditioning, if you approve the ordinance first and then you go with the waiver, you've got a problem with how you can condition the ordinance that the waiver would apply to it.
If I could just piggyback on that real quick, it's, in layman's terms, it's a peculiarity in our below-market-rate housing, the way that it's written, and we recognize that it's an issue, and it's been an issue in this project. So we will be bringing that item back to the council on its own for some tweaking, so that we don't have to go through this process again in the future, because we agree it seems disjointed.
Thank you for framing that for me.
Okay. So entertain a motion if someone wants to make one, or not?
Well, I'm not sure how to make this, but I'll make it. This is a Resolution Number
116.
116, okay. Resolution, the City Council, the City of San Carlos, approving Legacy Partners Residential LLC's request for reduction, adjustment, or waiver of affordable housing requirements. Is it at this point that I can attempt to insert an amendment to that?
Yes, Councilmember Collins. That's the story you would do it.
Okay.
And I would say it's, if there's a different requirement than Legacy's request, you would, we could add a whereas, that this is what you're proposing, and then change the, therefore be it resolved, paragraph in the resolution.
So what I would like the whereas to say, that there would be, that the, it would be 10% total, but 5% low and 5% moderate. I don't know if that flies with my fellow council members or not, but I'm going to make the motion.
So the motion's been made. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Yeah, I was on the Planning Commission back when the BMR ordinance was written. And I, it pains me to not continue to hold to the way it was written. However, I think that, as it said, nothing so much enhances a good as to make sacrifices for it. And I think that this is leading to that end. And so I hope to see that we, this is our first good step forward on this.
Yeah. Comment I'd like to make is that, I've said all along, we're trying to get the best project we can get. And nobody gets everything they want. The city hasn't gotten everything it wanted, the developer hasn't, Eastside hasn't, I haven't. I challenge anybody to tell me who's getting everything they want here. So I know Mr. Krab's not happy, and Ms. McClure isn't happy, but maybe we've done our job if we've made everybody angry, but who knows? But this is compromise, and it's bastard, it's worse, you know, unlike Congress. Doing nothing is not an option here.
Other comments, Mr. Obert?
Yeah, I think, I do appreciate Councilmember Collins's tweak to the amendment. But following along that logic, I would just like to point out that I, too, think we ought to get the best project we can get overall. I don't think that we have the information to decide that. I almost feel like we're negotiating over the features on a car without talking about price, because we don't really have a good handle on the financials. And you can certainly, you know, you can buy anything based on just negotiating about features, but it really does help to know what the financials are.
Other comments? Mr. Grocot?
Yeah, I just don't get it. I mean, I'm sitting here trying to think of an analogy, and the best thing I can come up with is, you know, like if you were telling a client that you could truck their material from one side of the country to the other for a certain price, and you know darn well what the speed limits are, but then, you know, before you set out and actually take your trip, you want to have everybody change their speed limits from 55 to 70 so that you can make your money. I mean, that's, something like that is what's being asked here, because I think as Ms. McClure talked about, these things have been on the table for a long, long time, and these guys knew coming into it what it was. And it should be baked into the cake, and now they're trying to change it. And I don't think they should do a lot of change.
They're not changing it. We've changed it. We're the ones that came up with this, with giving them the waiver back, because we took out 450 units out of the project. They didn't take it out of the project.
Well, that's the thing, too, is it's a percentage. So we're not, it's not like we set that you have to build this many moderately affordable units, no matter what, no matter how many units you get to build in total, you have to build, you know, say 50 affordable units. We didn't do that. It's a percentage. And I understand there's things that affect the percentage, like someone said earlier, I think Mr. Hesloop talked about, you got to build a roof, you got to build a garage underneath, so forth. But that's also a percentage. So...
Okay. Well, if we do it that way, then...
To keep the percentage the same at 15%, to me, just makes total sense.
Well, if we've reduced the project, we've reduced the project 20%, actually 21%. So if we have a 21% reduction in the BMR, that's about, what, maybe 12%?
No, but the percentage of the BMR follows the number of units up or down, you know, whatever the units number is doing.
But in this case, you're talking about going from 15 to 10, and you're talking about, what was a stretch to begin with, as it was, as was pointed out to me, our BMR ordinance, if most BMR ordinances are Cadillacs, ours is a Ferrari. So I mean, I'm the guy that wanted, that didn't want to give, to budge on it. But I realize that, you know, there are, they're just political realities. We're not going to get a reduced project and 15%. It's just not going to happen.
How do we know that?
How do we know that? Yeah, exactly.
I know the assertions. Seriously, I know the assertions. But I will tell you, and I don't wish to reduce your opinion of me, John, but in the course of my career in finance, there were a lot of times in negotiations when I knew what the numbers were, and that's not what I necessarily told the other side. And that's part of the game.
I don't dispute that. I just think that, you know, we've been doing, we've been, I've only been on the council for two years, and this thing's been going on for nine, the entire time that Mr. Grecelli and Mr. Grocot have been on the council.
Other comments? Okay. Let's call the question.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocot?
No.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
Mayor Grecelli?
Yes.
Okay. So we've given a reduction on that, and now we go back to 10B.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I, I just want to raise the issue that we're about to come, run out of our extension to 11:30. I don't plan on either making a motion to extend or voting to extend. I don't know where other people are coming from. But if the meeting were to be ending around 11:30, I just want to remind my colleagues that there is this item later on here where I am basically asking for guidance from you guys, if you wish to provide any, about an issue that will perhaps be facing us in the next few weeks. And we will have no other opportunity to give it to me unless we do it, so.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, my understanding from talking to the executive director is that the special meeting for this week is unlikely to happen from the SBWMA. The regular board meeting is, did you say the 21st?
I believe so, I guess.
Yeah, which would be before our next council meeting. It's, you know, unclear as to what is going to happen between now and then on the, on the potential work stoppage at the recycling station. Certainly up to the council how late you want to go tonight. I think that probably getting some direction from you, assuming you've had some opportunity to give it some thought, would probably be a pretty short agenda item.
Well, I, if, considering that you're looking for guidance, I would be willing to move right now to 11C to talk about that. We're going to come back to it if we have a vote at past 11:30.
Do you need a motion?
Well, let's wait until we get there. Go ahead. Mr., is there a staff report on 11C? No presentation? Okay.
There's a written staff report, no.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The issue, the issue that I'm looking for guidance on, and you don't have to provide any if you don't want it, is there is the possibility, if there is a work stoppage that occurs at the transfer station, that the SBWMA board, on which I am your representative, has to vote to approve the use of contract workers if the operator of that facility wishes to employ them. This is, was already, has already been brought before the SBWMA board once, and at that point, there was no action taken to approve the use of, use of contract workers. But if it comes up again, my personal approach is, I would like to give each side, labor and management, the greatest possible opportunity to work things out, however that ends up happening, with the caveat that I don't want to do anything to endanger public health and safety. And that's how I would guide my decisions. If you guys feel differently, one way or another, or want to say something differently, that's why I wanted this on the agenda.
I think I would, in this situation, I would probably hold my powder on this one. I would not necessarily want to endorse contract workers until I knew what was going to happen, if anybody's even going to do anything.
Right.
I mean, I would, in my opinion, I think I would hold and say, you know, I wouldn't endorse contract workers, because that might be an option that we may have to do, assuming that someone is, you know, someone goes on strike or something. I think it's preemptive. I don't know that it needs to be done, personally, but that's just my opinion. Other council members? Mr. Grocot?
I agree, it's preemptive, but I think it's something that the folks need to know is going to happen. We're not going to allow labor negotiations to affect public safety. And if we can't pick up trash because there's nothing to be done with it when it gets to the Shoreway facility, that's not fair to our public, our community.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying of the timing of this vote. I'm not disagreeing with you one bit on that. So other comments?
So by simply discussing it, can we be taking alternative number three of providing different direction to staff and the city's board member?
I think that's what we're doing.
Okay. And is that working for you?
It's working for me.
Okay. Very good.
Do we need a motion on that, Mr. Rubens?
You don't. I think you've got, you have general direction.
Here's Collins. Any comments?
Nope.
Okay. So you have direction?
I do. Thank you.
Okay. Now, is there a motion to extend the meeting or not?
I move that we extend the meeting to midnight.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Okay. Three to two passes. Pretty soon, we'll get the entire agenda out of here. Okay. All right. Go back to 10B. So I would entertain a motion or more discussion or motion and then discussion, whichever folks want to do.
Is the first motion the SEQA resolution? Is that right?
It's a resolution.
That's a resolution. And that's, that has nothing to do with A or B, that's just the SEQA resolution. Is that correct? Okay. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2013-dash...
117.
117. Resolution, the City Council, the City of San Carlos, making findings concerning significant effects, mitigation measures, and alternatives in adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, all in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, for the San Carlos Transit Village Plan Development and Accompanying Zoning Map Amendment of the Railroad Corridor from Mixed-Use Station Area MU-SA and Mixed-Use South Boulevard MU-SB zoning districts to Plan Development PD District.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I am going to be voting against every one of the resolutions tonight on this item for the very simple reason that I believe that the right thing for us to do, we have the lawful authority to act, but I believe the right thing for us to do is to wait until the new council is seated in December. We just had an election. I know, even though I was not campaigning, I know it was a very significant factor in the election for a lot of voters on both sides of the issue. And simply by, as a result of the timing of when this decision is being made, I think we do a disservice to the community by not allowing the will of the people, whatever it ends up being, to be, let me say, as, I don't want to say accurately, as recently, as recently updated, reflected in our decision-making.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, on this one, I voted no on the EIR the last time. This is, of course, completely coupled to that. I don't think the mitigation measures are sufficient for particularly traffic. And I, you know, brought that point up numerous times. I think the problems we have on Holly Street, for example, are really, you know, already the amount of development, the population we have within this city, and all the people trying to use Holly Street is a problem. And even with our restriping, that's not going to repair that problem or make it that significantly better. This project, Wheeler Plaza project, are only going to exasperate it. And that's just looking at Holly. I, the other day, I don't leave town at this particular time usually, but the other day, I was driving out of town going up Edgewood in the afternoon, in the late afternoon, when people were trying to come home, and traffic on Edgewood was backed up all the way past the Mormon church coming in. And there were more, as I, that's where it was stopped, at that road that goes off of Edgewood and around. And as I continued to drive up, there was, I was amazed that the cars coming in, that we're just going to end up parked. So we have a huge traffic problem, I think, coming in this town, whether you're coming in the front door or the back doors, it were. The noise issue was never really addressed, in my opinion. And the only thing I saw, talked about, and addressed was noise within the units. But the noise situation, that's going to be made worse on the east side because of the buildings, particularly on the north end of this project, I don't think are mitigated. Things that were said about using certain building materials, even Mr. Byrd said, there's, you know, we can't, there is no such thing. So it remains an issue. And I don't think the environmental impact report properly addressed it.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Call the question.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocot?
No.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
Mayor Grecelli?
Yes.
Okay. So moving on. Yes, sir.
On this, on this item, now that we're getting into this idea of the PUD, I have...
On this item, now that we're getting into this idea of the PUD, I have a real issue with one thing in particular. And that is, I actually went through, I did some measuring today. I've said many times that this project is out of context with San Carlos. And I'd like a moment to explain what I mean by that, and some of the particulars. And then I would like to address something that I'd like to see changed if I'm ever going to vote in favor of this project. The first one, to give an idea of the density of this project, I went over today to the east side, to the neighborhood north of Holly. And so, that includes Northwood, Riverton, Inverness, Sylvan, Springfield, Fairfield, and Old County Road. And I counted the number of houses, which, for the most part, there's a few addition remodels over there, very few, but most of those homes are cinder block homes that are two-bedroom, one-bath. There's 185 houses. If you put that in terms of bedrooms, excuse me, there's 185 bedrooms on that side. If you look at this project, the number of two-bedroom, two-bath apartments north of Holly is 109, which means there's 218 bedrooms just in the two-bedroom apartments. There's 78 one-bedroom and 99, or excuse me, 33 three-bedroom, which means if you total up all the bedrooms, and this is before we make any changes, or reduce the numbers, or cut off floors or anything, I'm looking at these plans, because that's all we had to go by, or all I had to go by at this point. What you're talking about is, I may have misspoke, there was 105 housing units, I had that right. So, there's, on that neighborhood, currently, there's 370 bedrooms. What we're talking about putting north of Holly on this project is 395 bedrooms, or a 107% increase of housing density in this part of town on that site. And another way to look at it is, just on land area, the land area of this project at the north part of, just north of Holly, is equal to the land area of Springfield Drive on one side of the street. So, what that says is, you're taking all these bedroom units, or all these units, and putting them on Springfield on one side of the street. That's the density that we're talking about just north of Holly, just to give an idea. I also went through, and I measured three or four projects around town. I measured the Elms, I measured the Samtrans Building, and I measured 1001 El Camino. 1001 El Camino, I was able to measure Morse, the El Camino, and Laurel Street, which are a little, each one's a little different. You would think Laurel and El Camino are exactly the same, but they're not if you look at what actually faces the street. And what I came up with, I was trying to figure out, okay, what's this project? Because somebody said, "We're not going to do story polls." I think Mr. Bird said, "That's preposterous, it's," I forget the exact term he used, "unconventional." And he mentioned something about, just take buildings that are done around town, and you can put them on that site and get an idea. So, that's what I did. Building one, if you're looking from El Camino facing the project, building one equals the Elms as it faces Elm Street. Building two equals the Samtrans Building facing San Carlos Avenue, which is about 300 feet, it's over 300 feet. Building three is equal to 1001 El Camino facing the El Camino, which is about 175 feet. Building four equals the Samtrans Building facing San Carlos Avenue, again, 300 feet. If you look at Buildings five and six, those are both like taking 1001 El Camino as it faces El Camino and putting them in that parking lot. Building seven, the only thing I could find in town that was similar to Building seven, which is actually a pretty narrow building, is 656 Walnut, which is the building that was built on Walnut Street just south of the Hacienda project, it's a little narrow building. Building eight equals 1001 El Camino facing Laurel Street. So, that's looking from El Camino at the project. Now, if you look at it facing Old County, building one equals, again, the Elms facing, but this time Cherry Street, because it's a little longer. Building two equals Samtrans Building facing San Carlos Avenue. Building three equals 1001 El Camino facing the El Camino. And building four equals Samtrans Building facing San Carlos Avenue. From Holly, between Holly and the train, again, it's just the same thing, it's 1001 El Camino facing El Camino. That's the size of it. And then Building seven, same thing, 656 Walnut Street. And then south of the depot, Building eight is like the west portion of the Samtrans Building facing San Carlos Avenue. In other words, if you consider that building, there's a western portion, there's the courtyard, and then there's the eastern portion, as you're looking at it from San Carlos Avenue. Total length of buildings north of Holly equals 966 feet. That's like putting five and a half 1001 El Caminos on that site as it faces El Camino. The total length of buildings south of Holly equals 579 feet. That's like putting three 1001 El Caminos at the portion south of Holly. So, that gives you an idea of the size of this project. That's why I think it's out of context. That's why I think one of the things we need to do is look at how much view is being lost, either in a horizontal or a vertical direction. And I would like to give staff the opportunity to look at that. I also think, when you look at this project from the El Camino, and most of the walkthroughs that we did were from El Camino, it's not a bad-looking project. I think the architect is right, it's going to, it has the appearance, in some parts of it anyways, of Pacific Hacienda. But if you're looking at it from Old County Road, it looks more like 1001 El Camino over and over and over again, because it's just a flat facade. And so, I think for us to move forward, what I think we should be doing is asking for more of articulation, looking at this project from Old County Road. It was stated that the 125-foot length is something that can be, you can get an exception to it from the existing zoning, if this was under the existing zoning, if the building has articulation. Well, it does have articulation, looking at it from El Camino, but looking at it from Old County, it virtually has none. And I don't think these east side folks deserve that kind of treatment from this or any other council. And so, I would like to see this project, the architect bring us back something one more time, with some adjustment to how it looks from the east side.
Other comments? Questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, or not?
I think I probably need some help here. I'd like to propose that we, it's adopting the rezoning ordinance, right? And how do I put in there that I would like to propose that we adopt alternative B? How does that get incorporated into this?
We've prepared a resolution for each of the alternatives in the staff report.
Okay.
There's attachment.
Is it attachment?
To B and.
To B?
We're just verifying that.
Oh, attachment to B, Exhibit B. Is that the one?
The ordinance and Exhibit A, which is the findings, is the same for all three alternatives. Then, there are three sets of conditions.
Okay.
One for the Planning Commission recommendation, one for Alternative A, and one for Alternative B. So, your motion would be the ordinance with Exhibit A, and pick which Exhibit B you would like to start with.
Okay. I understand, I think I understand. So, what I would be saying then is, or proposing, is that we adopt ordinance number. Okay. And then do I read all this, and at the end, do I put in to incorporate Exhibit B, alternative B? Is that how we would do it?
You would move the approval of the ordinance with the alternative B set of conditions.
Okay. All right. All right. I'm sorry, Crystal, what was the ordinance number again?
We'd like to clarify also, through the chair, that this motion would include the staff suggestions that were made earlier, perhaps with the exception of the El Camino changes at the intersection of Holly Street. We didn't know if there was traction for that or not.
I think there is.
As long as, I just, just leave it alone is what I think we heard.
Yeah, leaving it, not making any changes to northbound El Camino at Holly.
So, this then would include the staff recommended changes, with the exception of changing El Camino? Okay, thank you.
All right. So, I'm going to struggle through this, so, just help me when I get there. All right, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of San Carlos approving the San Carlos Transit Village Plan Development, Plan and Related Zoning Map Amendment, and to rezone the railroad corridor bounded by the Caltrain tracks on the east, El Camino Real on the west, the northern boundary of Assessor's Parcel Number 050-055-020 on the north, and the city's municipal boundary with Redwood City on the south, from Mixed Use Station Area MU-SA and Mixed Use South Boulevard MU-SB zoning districts to Plan Development PD zoning district. And this is to include Exhibit 2B, Exhibit B, alternative B conditions? Does that do it? And including the staff recommendations to exclude the Holly Street.
That will work good.
And others.
Lane changes, I guess.
If I could just walk through the staff recommendations.
Okay.
There's modified wording for B3D and B3E, having to do with modifications to the fourth floor of Buildings four and five as set out. Condition B, 35B, would modify the regulation of restaurants by changing it from a use permit by the Planning Commission to a use permit by the zoning administrator. And Condition D1 would be modified to reduce the amount of contribution for landscaping from $400,000 to $150,000 for landscaping only, no sidewalk.
I agree.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, I want to make sure that, I'm sorry, Mr. Rubens?
I just wanted for the record, because it was included in the language, it was not included in the language of the motion, that this is an introduction tonight of the ordinance.
Just an introduction, okay.
The only thing I would add, and if, I don't know if the maker, or maybe it's involved in the paperwork, but all the units are three stories. The four stories on all the units, one, two, three, four, five, six, are gone.
Not four and five.
They're gone. I don't know whether it's in there, but that's what I'm saying. We're knocking them out.
I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought on four and five were the only buildings that were going to remain four stories.
Portions of the.
Portions of it. Those are the ones you were taking a unit off, a couple of units off here and there.
I'm not saying portions. We're knocking off all the four stories.
Under alternate B?
I don't know what alternate B.
Alternative B.
Doesn't, it does not knock off the entire fourth floor of Buildings four and five.
I think it should be knocked off.
Oh, you think it should be knocked off?
Yeah. And I asked you if it should knock off, and that's what I'm asking for, for an adjustment. And also, the third story on Building eight, and I don't know if that's in there or not.
Well, that's part of alternative B.
Okay, that's fine. So, what you're asking is to add.
To amend.
The rest of the existing fourth floor of Buildings four and five.
Four and five.
Yeah. And how many units does that entail? What does that bring it down to? It's a 251 without that reduction, right?
Are you going to treat the height of Building eight?
Oh, good question. Thank you.
So, what's the question?
Pardon me? We'll let you get that for us, but then we need to deal with Building eight's height.
It's going to be 42 feet, in my opinion. Should be 42 feet. To hell with this high ceiling bullshit. 49, three, it's supposed to be. Oh, you're right, okay.
Just for reference, right now, Building eight stands at 45 feet.
Pardon me?
Sorry. Sorry. It would be 26.
I'm sorry, did you say 24 units?
Well, I thought we had a count of 24, but 26? 20. 20 units.
What does the count end up being, then?
231.
Is that right? 231?
Alternative B was 251.
Well, that's 231, but keeping in mind, you know, the unit count and the square footage are two different things, so.
You can change the configuration.
Knockout three, or three-bedroom.
How many square feet is that? Okay, the developer says 18 units on the top floor, but more importantly, to the developers, the square footage.
It depends.
It depends.
Yeah, the number of units is, because they can change the three-bedroom units to two-bedroom units, units can go up or down. It's not a matter of units, it's a matter of square feet.
Right. Okay. Well, that's even more aggressive.
Well, I'm trying to, you know, give some, as you said, give and take, you know, three bed, let's make them three stories.
Mr. Mayor, just procedurally, you'd be, there's a motion and a second, and then you were, it sounded to me like you might be proposing a substitute motion.
I wasn't proposing, I was just asking if they would amend their motion.
Okay. Or that's the alternative way to do it.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Let's wait a second and see what the.
Yeah, let's see what they say.
Get the right square footage, if we can get it.
And then we need to ask them.
Would you say 45?
At our count, at staff's count, Mr. Mayor, that would be, on Building four, that would be 11 units, and on Building five, that would be seven units for a total of 18 units.
Okay.
So, that brings it up to 233. Is that right?
It was more than that.
What was it, 251?
That's what we believe, yeah, 233.
Okay. All right, and then the height of Building eight, you had.
42.
It's 42.
42. Which is the same as the two-story Building seven.
It's the same as a two-story on Building seven?
Yes.
It's three feet lower than what it shows on the drawings right now.
No, it's not.
The height right now is 40, I believe is 49 feet nine inches.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I'm just thinking that 42 feet is just still pretty high.
But it has a significant impact, again, on the variation in the roof line. I mean, I think that, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think one thing to be careful about with Building eight is not to make it a flat top building. I think that, you know, if you look at the buildings across the street, you look at the Drake Building, you know, that's the kind of architecture I think that would be good, you know, to make that place. So, I think that, you know, to allow for a maximum height of 42 isn't unreasonable, particularly with, again, with a variation in the roof line. Again, I don't think it. Again, I don't think it has to all be 42 feet. But if you make it lower, you're going to push it down to more of a flat look. And I... And again, I'm not sure that's what you should go for.
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at the drawing, and the 50-foot line is... There's no graphic scale on here, but the 50-foot line is at least five feet above what's shown. So it is 45 feet currently, as it shows.
So the most is... We're saying it would be 42 feet, then?
And not all of it would be 42 feet, you're saying?
We don't believe so, but again, it would be a redesign. So we would have to see it at the architectural review stage. But I think just from an architectural design standpoint, we know that 42 feet would allow you to have some good peaked roofs, you know?
Okay. And not the entire... I mean, you're not going to have 42 feet, 42 feet, and then square all...
That would be a maximum of 42, and there would be some expectation that there's variation in that roof line.
Okay.
All right.
And it would... Again, it would go to the Planning Commission for design review.
Right.
And I'd like to correct the information. Councilmember Grocott is correct. The height, again, it's measured at different points, but the maximum, maximum height is 46 feet nine inches. So he's correct that it...
Anyway, 42 is what we're coming up with.
All right. Okay. So we'll leave it 42.
Would you accept the amendments that I made?
Yes, I would.
Would the secondar accept the amendments? Any other comments? Okay. The city attorney, we put all the things in there that we're supposed to. Introduction to the ordinance. Okay? And all some of these ancillary items, like garbage, and trees, and shuttles, and a myriad of other things, are going to be... Mr. City Manager, they're going to be handled in the process. And we're going to... It's going to come back to us again.
That's correct. I think the staff have a very good handle on the council's perspective on those issues.
Station monitor.
Feel free to reiterate them tonight if you'd like, but those items will all be coming back to you as we move them forward.
Trees on the berm, the eastern... On the east side of the railroad tracks. I agree that I think as soon as we can to put the trees in, and I know some of them may have to come out, but the sooner you start them, the sooner they grow. The garbage situation, I think somehow we have to work with Samtrans, Caltrain, and our city to figure out some way that the garbage doesn't keep blowing over there. That really is a separate thing. The shuttles to be moved, which we talked about, it was already through TNC. The taxis to be moved. I guess I assume that's in the same line as the shuttles. The parking lufies to be dedicated to L'Oréal Park, to either expand or improve, however it works out with the details, how we can do that. Am I missing here? Trees?
Can we have one more? I'm sure this is already in there, because I read it. The parking, free Caltrain parking after six, so that's all part of it as well.
Right. And the other thing is the permits for the... As Mr. Survey indicated earlier, that's another part of it, that we want to make sure that there's permits for transit, so people can park in their own neighborhoods.
And perhaps we can just do a quick straw vote of those items for the record?
Okay. Just on those items? Okay? As opposed to the... As opposed to the motion? Mr. City Attorney, can I step back from the motion and do a straw vote on those? Or will it come after?
You know, if it's important to the council members to have that heard before, I think it would be appropriate to straw poll before.
Well, I agree. I think they all should be taken care of.
So do I.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So there's a motion on the floor. Any of the comments? Call the question.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is 11B, but we're not going to be getting to that one tonight. So... Mr. City Manager, is there any other thing that we need to talk about tonight?
No, I think you covered the gamut. We'll bring that next item back on, that last item, back on the next agenda.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.